Quiet down, please take your seats, we're about to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to today's Committee on Technology. At this time, please place your electronic devices on vibrate or in silent mode. If you want to testify, please come up to the Sergeant in Arm desk and fill out this testimony slip. If you want to submit testimony, you may do so at council.nyc.gov. Again, it is counsel, testimony at council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair, you may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone, welcome to our hearing this afternoon. I would like to recognize Committee members, Councilmember Abreu and Councilmember Holden, who I believe is on Zoom before getting started, but welcome, everyone. Buenas tardes. I'm Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Technology. Excited to hold this important first ever hearing on cryptocurrency and blockchain technology in New York City. Cryptocurrency and its associated blockchain technology have transitioned from niche status to mainstream popularity and have had exponential growth in recent years. This cryptocurrency industry is estimated to be valued at around $1 trillion globally today, from just $5 billion in 2015. While blockchain technology has seen expansion across industries for uses like supply chain management, financial transactions, online certificate verification, and more, cryptocurrency and blockchain blockchain technology both represent great potential. For instance, cryptocurrency provides transactional freedom that is not present in a centralized financial system and typically requires just a computer or smartphone with internet access to use, providing a level of accessibility that does not exist in traditional banking institutions. Blockchain technology provides a level of data stability that ensures an unprecedented degree of authenticity and also increases the security, transparency, and traceability of data. Having such trust boosting functionality creates immense benefit across industries by streamlining operations and decreasing the potential for fraud and abuse. However, while cryptocurrency and blockchain technology have the potential for societal benefits, they also have considerable risks. Mining for proof of work concept cryptocurrencies like Bitcoin requires high levels of energy consumption and have definite environmental impacts. Cryptocurrency is also generally highly volatile in value and is largely unregulated, with incidents like the FTX collapse resulting in the loss of billions of dollars throughout the crypto market, with little recourse for people to recoup their investments. Blockchain technology also has its own dangers and disadvantages. Setting up a blockchain can be expensive and resource intensive, and the distributed decentralized nature of blockchain technology means that flaws within a blockchain system are harder to correct in a timely manner. Further, the permanence of blockchain data creates a unique privacy risk where eventually enough data can be gathered to identify a user based on their history of blockchain transactions. While cryptocurrency and blockchain technology are often discussed together, it is also worth noting that they can be utilized independently. They each have components that can be adopted or regulated by government, but blockchain technology currently has the most potential for use in government settings. The possibilities for crypto and blockchain technology in New York City are apparent, and it is thus vitally important that we fully explore the pathways to provide these potential benefits to New Yorkers. Mayor Eric Adams has stated he wants New York City to be the center of cryptocurrency and other financial innovations, that's quote, and converted his first three paychecks into cryptocurrency. CTO Matt Fraser has also highlighted how blockchain could potentially be used for functions like asset transfer and records validation. We must do our due diligence to not only understand cryptocurrency and blockchain technology, but also make sure that New Yorkers can properly access the necessary information to safely navigate these novel technologies. Today's hearing aims to draw in any vision for both technologies, ensuring that as a city, we are giving thoughtful consideration to this potentially transformational technology and industry, rather than refusing to engage because the issues in underlying technology are complicated and not yet fully formed. The Committee is looking forward to learning more about the present status of cryptocurrency and blockchain technology, as well as efforts that our city is taking, is taking and can take in the future to maximize the usability of cryptocurrency and blockchain technology. But importantly, while still protecting and uplifting New Yorkers. We are eager to hear from the administration, advocates, and experts on the opportunities presented by cryptocurrency and blockchain technology. And I would like to thank that Technology Committee staff for putting together this hearing. I'd like to recognize, oh, I've already recognized the members. I'll now turn it over to Irene, our Committee Counsel for Administrative Proceedings.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. My name is Irene Bojavsky. I'm a Council to the Committee on Technology, and I will be moderating the hearing today. And now, we are pleased to welcome representatives from the administration. We have with us Commissioner Fraser, and I understand that Ryan Beckman is also here available for questions. I would like to administer the affirmation for each representative. Please raise your right hands. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee today and respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Councilmember Fraser? Thank you, you may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez and members of the Council Committee on Technology. My name is Matthew Fraser. I'm the Chief Technology Officer for the City of New York, and I lead the Office of Tech, Knowledge, and Innovation. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight OTI's role in identifying how new technologies such as blockchain can be deployed to enhance government services and to provide a platform for a robust discussion about this relevant topic. Blockchain, a distributed ledger technology that can enable more efficient transactions and transparent transactions of digital information, has seen a rapid growth over the past several years. The cryptocurrency market, for example, which illustrates only one use case of the underlying blockchain technology, is worth hundreds of billions of dollars today, having barely existed a decade ago. This sort of growth presents an incredible opportunity if harnessed in the right way. In addition to the blockchain industry, helping New York City's economy recover from the lingering impacts of the pandemic, blockchain technology has the potential to streamline and centralize document retention, enable real time records validation, and support asset transfers among many other applications. As the nation's most forward looking city, New York has the responsibility to carefully evaluate any emerging technology and to put systems in place that can leverage that technology to strengthen government services, propel economic growth, and improve the lives of New Yorkers. For the past several years, New York City has probably been a pioneer in embracing blockchain, the blockchain industry, as it evaluates the potential government applications and plants a flag as a viable home for blockchain companies that can grow our economy and hire New Yorkers. For example, the New York City Economic Development Corporation helped to sponsor New York City Blockchain Week and launched a blockchain focused civic technology competition, among other efforts. The Adams Administration has also taken a forward looking approach to this emerging industry and is exploring potential use cases that can make government work better for New Yorkers, living in an increasingly digital society. For example, the administration is actively investigating using blockchain technology to support validation and sharing of legal documents such as birth certificates. Recently, the Department of Finance launched a proof of concept to test how blockchain could be used to detect and reduce deed fraud. Additionally, the administration is evaluating the use of a digital wallet, which will help meet New Yorkers where they are and support electronic payments and transactions. As the city's central technology authority, the Office of Tech and Innovation has stood up a robust strategic initiatives division aimed at developing partnerships, networks, and programs to cement New York City as the leading hub for inclusive innovation. Over the past year, we've built a research team within the division tasked with investigating, piloting, and developing frameworks to implement emerging technologies. With this team in place, we are actively recruiting two digital assets and blockchain policy advisors to investigate and advance government blockchain use cases. The individuals who will fill these positions will work with government and external stakeholders to identify, assess, and develop strategies to implement blockchain applications in the right way. It's important to note, while blockchain could have a plethora of use cases in government, our team is laser focused on researching and determining where blockchain implementation could make more sense than traditional technology. We feel that taking a thoughtful, measured approach to the evaluation of any new technology is critical for our city. The blockchain industry, like any emerging technology, has felt its share of growing pains, largely due to overhyped companies, bad actors, and ill suited applications. The Office of Tech and Innovation is committed to continuing this approach, working with partners across government and hearing from public and private sector stakeholders to find ways for New York City government and its economy to benefit from this technology, which is ripe with potential. We look forward to discussing this further with the Committee, and I will now take Councilmember questions.
I'd also just like to acknowledge Councilmember Vicky Palatino, who's joined us from the Committee, and thank you, Commissioner, thank you for your testimony. I think you covered, I think, a lot of why we wanted to put this hearing together, right? Is really understanding the direction that the city and this administration and us collectively want to take with regards to this new technology. So, can you share a little bit about how this administration views cryptocurrency's role in the city? And does the city accept cryptocurrency as a valid form of payment in any of its operations and functions today?
Got it. So, I think before we get into crypto, we'd have to level set our expectations on where crypto fits in the scheme between blockchain and what crypto is. So blockchain is a foundational technology. We, as a city, are exploring many use cases where we can apply that to remove friction from city services. Blockchain being distributed ledger base, which means it enables more transparency. A good example of that is between the three members sitting ahead, if one of you has $5 in your pocket and you give a dollar to the other person, the only people that know that that transaction happens is the person who had the money and the person who received the money. What blockchain enables is a more transparent action, not saying where the money specifically went, but what you had in your account, a transaction occurred, and now what the new balance is. So when we look at where crypto fits in, in terms of where the city sits, the city as a government entity cannot, cannot accept payment in any currency that's not recognized by the federal government. So, as it stands right now, we are limited in taking current payments and things like the US dollar. We are exploring use cases where we could use third party services to, so that you can take things like crypto, pay for your tax bill, pay for your parking tickets, by using a third party service that takes that, that crypto asset, converts it into US dollar and renders that payment back to us in US dollar. So, short answer to the question is, at this moment, there's nothing that we are accepting. We're directly taking crypto in as payment.
Okay, and so there's, outside of the, you mentioned parking tickets potentially?
So, we're exploring a number of things. So, for our payment services, when you look at things like paying parking tickets online or you look at paying your tax bill online, there are systems that support facilitating that online transaction. If we can partner with, and this is one of the things that we're exploring, partnering with a company that takes in crypto payments, people like PayPal, Coinbase, you can pay something in crypto, it will convert that crypto into US dollar and then render that cash out to the city to settle that transaction.
Got it, thank you. I'm curious, so I'm just going to reference a few comments that Mayor Adams has made in the past and maybe the last year and a half regarding crypto, so, you know, feel free to answer, I know that these were, these are his quotes, to the best of your ability. I do remember the mayor making a comment early on about a system potentially like City Coin, like we see, like we saw in Miami. Do you have a sense if, if we are, if the city and the administration are at a place where they can speak a little bit more about kind of what, what came about, any exploratory phase of instituting City Coin potentially here for the same purpose that you just highlighted, like a parking ticket? Is that something that you feel, feels like the future for us, utilizing City Coin? Or something like that?
Yeah, so I think without context, some of the statements might be, it's easy to misinterpret. So, in this particular case, what the mayor was referring to is, there's a significant portion of the population of New York City that represents the unbanked and underbanked community. And having assets or having a means where members of that community can participate to build wealth, to get a pathway out of poverty, is something that the mayor fully supports. Now, in terms of specific investments or bringing something like a New York City coin to market or anything along that lines, unlike the city of Miami, New York City has historically been the fintech capital, the financial tech capital of the world. And we can't afford to make investments or wildly throw, wildly throw products out that doesn't necessarily meet a maturity level that we feel comfortable with. So, since the start of the administration, we've been evaluating what's the right way to enter the market, if we enter the market, and specifically, where should we place our efforts around blockchain and how should we leverage crypto? At this moment, we haven't made any tangible decisions on whether a New York City coin would ever emerge, but we are looking for practical applications of blockchain related technology and how we can use third party services to accept payments using crypto.
Thank you. So, I have a follow up question regarding crypto. I do remember, I think back in November 2021, the mayor did also mention that he wanted to create a committee, a cryptocurrency committee? I don't know if you mentioned that in your, your opening testimony, but can you share anything about said committee, if it's been formed, if they meet? Anything regarding this kind of committee? I'm not, I'm not aware, so if there's anything you can share, there's a timeline, any, any public facing kind of reporting from said committee?
Yeah, sure thing. So, when we looked, when we look at getting feedback from the crypto industry, and not just the crypto industry, I look back at the broader blockchain web three industry, we have a number of forums where we take information in today, and we get, we hear feedback from industry in terms of what they, what they would like to see in New York City and things that are impediments from growing in New York City. Now, a lot of that communication is fostered through our Economic Development Corporation and some of the existing communication channels that come into that in. We have explored formally establishing a blockchain web three committee. We are in the process where we're still evaluating specific membership charter and like responsibilities. In, but as it stands right now, most of the communication that we cut, we get in comes through one of our existing channels that we have with industry today.
So, it's, the, it's, so my understanding is like there's no cryptocurrency committee, but, but you are all gearing more towards creating a blockchain?
Yeah, blockchain web three. So, what, crypto is only one aspect of how the blockchain can be.
I'm just quoting him, but I understand what you're saying.
But it's, it's, again, with, with a little bit more context, web three blockchain committee with a subgroup that's focused on crypto.
Okay, and has the committee been set up?
No, we're in the process of establishing.
Okay. And would OTI have oversight?
Yeah, so that, as the city's tech authority, we'd have oversight from a technology perspective. But again, when you look at the broad application of what blockchain will enable, there's certainly financial impacts, there's certainly other, other sorts of impacts that, that this will bring to market, so we will not do it exclusively from OTI or from the CTO role, it will be a mix of resources from the city that will help co-chair the committee.
Okay, and do you have a sense of what other agencies or?
So, historically, in these efforts, I've mentioned, the Economic Development Corporation has hosted Blockchain Week. They all, they also have a mission and mandate that's focused on economic prosperity and rebuilding workforce in New York City. So, EDC will certainly play a part, and then there are other members of the administration that, other teams from the administration that will play a part, but as the list comes and as we formalize, I gladly share with Council.
Yeah, 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 you should, for context, know that we invited a number of agencies today. OTI is the only one that agreed to come, so I appreciate it, but I'm, the reason I raised this flag is because they're, they're not even here to like start this, this conversation, so I don't know if there's anything, if there's any insight that you can share, if those conversations with those agencies have even started, because obviously we want to bring them here so we can continue to work collaboratively, but are there, do you have any sense of, like, besides EDC, like, have you had, started to have those conversations about working collaboratively?
Yeah, so we certainly have, so although the agencies aren't present as the Chief Technology Officer as a city and as a cabinet member in the mayor's administration, I'm here representing more than just one entity, I'm here representing the city. And we have had conversations beyond the Office of Tech and Innovation exclusively with EDC, with finance, with a number of other entities that are represented across, including our Department of Health and in other areas that maintain vital records to see how we can leverage blockchain tech. The conversation is actively going within the city. One of the things that I'll note is, when you step in on day one, there's a lot of things that you want to accomplish as a priority, but it's like bringing a patient in through an, in through an emergency room. First, you have to assess trauma and what's going on within the city itself. And from a technology perspective, we had a number of areas that were critical, things like digital equity that we were, that were on a back burner, where we had programs that were long started and had not materialized in a meaningful way that we had to pull forward. So now that we've gotten to a space where we were able to deal, in large cases, with stopping the bleeding, we've got some other things that are coming out within the next month that may come up as, as the questions go on, we, we're now in a space where we can more actively and holistically look at blockchain application across the city, and, and I am confident the next time that we have a forum like this, we'll have broader participation from the administration.
Okay, I'm curious, and now in your testimony, you mentioned EDC specifically working on an initiative around blockchain, and so I just, you should know that they declined to come today, they said they didn't have anything in the, in the pipeline, so I don't know if you can elaborate a little bit more on the said initiative?
Okay.
Yeah, if there's anything you can share.
What, what EDC sponsors, as a co-sponsor weekly, annually is Blockchain Week, where it brings those that have leading innovation in blockchain, leveraging blockchain related tech, those that are interested in learning about blockchain related tech, and then also bringing civic innovation together for those that are in New York that have startups that are focused in that space, and bringing that community together under Blockchain Week. Now, thousands of people annually have participated in Blockchain Week, and I think the Economic Development Corporation and a partner with the CTO's office have worked very closely on that, on those events, and we expect that in 2023, that event is coming back this year in September.
Okay. Commissioner, what are some of the steps that you would like to city, you would like to see the city take with respect to cryptocurrency?
So, what I'd say is, we're fairly limited in the steps that we can exclusively take with cryptocurrency, because there isn't a federal regulatory framework as yet. As I mentioned, some of the barriers that we have in terms of what we can accept and what we can halt is limited until federal policies mature. One of the things that I'd like to see is we've continued to see in, in New York, if we just look at crypto as an example, I mentioned that New York City has been the financial tech hub of the world, you know, for, for the past better part of the century, and we expect to keep it that way. If you look across 2022, there was about 14 billion in capital raised in the crypto space. Of that 14 billion in capital, over 50% was raised in New York City. The next closest city was out in Silicon Valley, which raised three times less than New York. Then was Miami, which raised eight times less than New York. So what I'd like to see from New York is for us to create a fertile ground where these technologies can evolve and grow, and we can continue to build local talent that can emerge into this market. Also with this, this volatility and anything that grows as rapidly as this does. So if you go back to 2010, you, you're talking about a market that represented virtually nothing in industry to a market today that represents almost a trillion dollars. Now, in that, the fact that we're talking about a 14 year span where you saw that sort of rapid growth, we, we see some volatility, we see a lot of volatility in that, but as the market matures, we want to make sure that we don't miss the opportunity to ensure that New York City retains its place as the financial tech, the financial tech hub of the world.
Thank you. What, what steps do you think we can take to protect New Yorkers from potential harms from cryptocurrency?
So, I'd be very, very careful and in sort of pointing out what the city's role in this, so the city, as a city, we are not financial advisors by any means, and I think the best thing that we can do are the efforts that we've taken across traditional, across traditional financial tools, which is providing pathways where you can build financial literacy, helping people understand risk, where they should invest, where they should not invest, typically how they protect their assets and things along that lines. So we've partnered with, through our DCWP and a number of entities, we've partnered and we've, we've brought financial literacy courses out. I'm hopeful that as we go within the next year or so, we can get more of those courses broadly available, and then we can incorporate other things into that, like the risk associated with.
Like universal?
I'm sorry?
What was the last part of it?
I said like the risk associated with investing in this, these types of assets.
Six in here, really bad. So, I want to just, thank you, I want to take back, take it back to something that the mayor had mentioned about, I think it was in the daily news, about wanting to introduce a cyber wallet from municipal workers and to infuse cryptocurrencies into city education. Could you explain a little bit about maybe what he meant by a cyber wallet from municipal workers?
Sure thing. So when he says cyber wallet, it's, it's akin to a digital wallet. Now, a digital wallet has no affinity to crypto or blockchain related tech exclusively, but what it is is.
But it would accept crypto, it could accept crypto.
Well, digital wallet by any, any means can accept any sort of currency that you want to hold in it, including crypto. But the thought behind the digital wallet, just, just to build out the broader context, is when you think about the government as we render aid and we, as we give services out in terms of food benefits or transit benefits, that money is rendered out through traditional means, whether it's a debit card or whether it's an actual metro card that someone uses to go into the subway. Now, by doing, by giving it, by giving money out in those, through those means, we're limited in the opportunities that we have to provide additional benefits. So one of the things that we'd like to do as an administration is to get to the point in the mayor said this publicly, where we can incentivize healthier behavior. So imagine for food benefits, if you had a digital wallet where you went out and you spent a dollar and you bought something like vegetables or something healthy versus buying sugary snacks or soda, and then the city could provide incentive points, meaning dollar matching, dollar for dollar, and the things that you spend on healthy products versus on sugary products. A digital wallet gives us the capability to do those kinds of things. In addition to that, by broadening our eligibility framework and by looking at who's actually taking advantage of public services, it might give us an opportunity to spite, to spot services that someone may be eligible for, but they are not fully taking advantage of. So the digital wallet concept is less about, you know, a crypto or blockchain nexus, it's more about centralizing benefits on a single platform that gives you a holistic look at every dollar that you get from the city in support.
Yeah, I, okay, so that's clear. How is that different than the MyCity app?
So, MyCity, the MyCity application is, or the MyCity app is a little bit, a little bit different, but it's part of the same ecosystem. So when we look at MyCity, part of the challenge that we have with government services is that over the past, you know, the past century as a city has evolved, especially as, as it's evolved from a technology perspective, services have been built up around agency identity, not around our customers, not around our constituents. So when you go online and you look at web presences, systems that are built in the Department of Environmental Protection are built for DEP, systems that are built in HRA, DSS are built for DSS, and there's not much context shared between those systems. What MyCity is focused on doing is taking the customer and putting the customer upfront. And a very tangible example of that, it's what's coming out in the first phase of MyCity, which is childcare. Currently, for childcare, you have to interact with three agencies if you want to subsidize childcare in some form. The Administration for Children's Services, the Department of Education, or the Department for Social Services, DSS. And that application process starts the same way. It's a federal, it's a New York State application form that someone has to fill out. Depending on what sort of childcare they want, they have to provide that information to, let's say they go to ACS, then they submit it, and they go, wait a minute, this is not what I was looking for, then they go to DOE, then they go to DSS, and the process is a round robin until you find what you're looking for. What MyCity does is it takes that application in one time, conducts a preliminary eligibility determination, it tells someone which programs they're, they're enabled or that they are eligible for, and then they can make a determination of which agencies that they want to submit it to, right? Now, what that does is, instead of having three, an application that has to go to three separate places on paper, you have one, now one digital application that you submit. You get a preliminary determination around eligibility to apply for the program, and now you know where you're routing your, your application to based on what the program is, what, what the program benefits are. So, when we look at MyCity and we look at the digital wallet, as MyCity evolves and as we offer more services, you'll get to the point where you apply for your transit benefits, you apply for your food benefits in the same place, and your MyCity profile will be linked to your digital wallet. So all of those things will be rendered into the same place.
Okay.
It's, it's not two separate things, but it's two things that are connected.
And both, the, the cyber wallet would also, because I'm just trying to, I understand what you're saying, how they're, they're going to essentially be married at some point once it evolves, right? But the cyber wallet is also collecting information that is helping to determine eligibility for certain services, is what I heard you say?
The cyber wallet can, can be used to look at utilization, right? So, if you look at something like where you spend in a store, or you swipe in the transactions associated with that swipe and what you're purchasing and how you can provide incentives, a digital wallet that's connected to a person's identity, that's also connected, not A digital wallet that's connected to a person's identity, that's also connected not just to one benefit, but to all the benefits the city renders. Gives us insights into who's using it, who needs more of it. Those that are doing, or that, those that are buying, like I said, in some cases. If we look at it just from the food use case, if you're buying healthy foods versus sugary snacks. If the city wanted to do an incentive program, it gives us a pathway where we could do matching. Whether it's portions of a dollar or a dollar for dollar for spends on healthy food products.
So would there be a day where, once the MyCity app is fully evolved? Where a cyber wallet is not necessary, if it, if it feels like everything can live on the MyCity app and all the uses of it?
So when I, when I would look at this, I'd look at the MyCity process as the application process. That removes the paperwork that you have to do today. Like we get to the point where instead of going to 100 different places to apply for services and benefits. You go to one place, you fill out an application and it gives you access to the things that you need. The wallet component is when you want to manage your actual distribution of funds, how much money do I have in the bank? I want to swipe a card somewhere and I want to pay for something. The wallet part controls the financial aspects, including dispersment, where your money comes in. And debit credit activities of where you swipe.
Got it. Are there any, okay. Are there any risks that you can anticipate with the MyWallet app, especially like with so much like personal informa- uh, with the, with the cyber wallet, excuse me? Is there any risk associated with it because it's collecting personal information?
Yeah, so I think for us, anytime that you have any product that emerges into market. And then also when you reach portions of the commute, of the population that, that may not have had access to these types of services before. There's a digital literacy effort, that's, a digital and financial literacy effort, that's, that's, that's necessary. But in terms of ensuring that we're safeguarding the data that we're collecting. We have every application that we put out, every service that we put out goes through a rigorous penetration testing exercise. To make sure that it meets all of the security standards of modern day applications. In addition to that, we have a team at New York City Cyber Command that operates 24 by 7. Ensuring that the city's tech estate is well, well protected.
And who, who else, what other city agencies would have, or who else would have access to that data?
In terms of the, the data that comes out of the wallet.
Yes.
Uh, so I think as we move forward, just like every other agreement that we have in terms of distributing data throughout the, the city. Goes through our Office of Information Privacy to ensure that our constituents are not leaking information out in ways that they don't, they don't feel. That they don't expect. And the use of the data that comes out of any product that we, that we put out is governed by MOUs between. The agencies that have to prove a need to have that information. So it's not like everyone can come and they have carte blanche access to whatever they want. But those policies are formed as the products come out. And as relevant agencies share, we, we refine the policies to make sure that only those that need access get access.
Okay. Do you have, um, is there a timeline?
So in terms of, of timing, we expect by the end of calendar, this calendar year. Our first pilot to go out on, by the end of the first quarter of this year, the MyCity, uh, first wave of MyCity is going to be released. And by the end of the calendar year, we expect our first instance of the city wall to go out.
And repeat the, the MyCity piece, when is that ready to launch? I apologize.
By the end of the first quarter of this year.
Okay. And that's going to remain, that's still going to be the childcare portion?
That's correct. So we have childcare coming up first. But behind childcare, there's a cadre of other services that we're looking to incorporate. Part of the, part of, part of the strategy is as we renovate systems across the city. Instead of building into these silos, incorporate them into the central MyCity repository and build, and build. That way versus trying to randomly pull things in.
Yeah, and then the crypto wallet, you said by the end of this calendar year?
Uh, the digital wallet by the end of the calendar year, we'd have our first, our first instance.
Okay. Um, and then my, my next question is, I, I had a, I had a few briefings in preparation for today's hearing. One that I thought was really helpful was with the State Department of Finance. And I, I'm fully aware that a lot of the, the crypto exchanges and like the way that we all talk about crypto is, is, a lot of it is really relegated to the state and their regulations. Has the city had those conversations with the state to institute a lot of the things? Or even some of the initiatives or ideas that you, that you just mentioned today? And, and how are those conversations going?
Yeah, so I, I'd like to reaffirm some of the things that the mayor has said publicly in terms of the partnership between the city and the state. We have great allies in the state. Governor Hochul's been a big supporter of New York City in helping us get what we need. And we've worked very closely with the industry to take a look at some of the regulatory processes that exist on the state level. So I, I think the, the big thing to note is New York State is an actual regulator. So New York State's DFS is the one that issues the bit license, and they're the ones that can, can control who can emerge into the space in New York. And we've worked very closely with them in looking at that process. So at the beginning of the administration, we had a lot of conversations with the governor's office about the speed at which. It takes to get a bit license issued, right? And we had a number of conversations around eligibility criteria, around who can apply. And some of those conversations has resulted in some changes on the DFS end. Including adding additional resources to that office so that they can churn out licenses quicker. We're by no means finished in that conversation, but we want to make sure that we, we work with the state. Again, to enable New York City to continue to be the fin, the financial tech hub for the world. And to do that, it requires partnering for smart regulation, not overregulation.
Right. Is there, do you all have a goal year to year of how many licenses would support that, that goal of remaining, of continuing to support the city being the financial tech hub?
Yeah, so right now, we're, we're, we're trying to figure out in partnership is how quickly we can move them through. And I think we, a lot of our expectations are set on historic performance. And now if we baseline based, just based purely on how many licenses have been issued historically. And we said, all right, we need to take the number up by 10%, 15%, 20%. The numbers have been so low that it, it, it doesn't make sense to chart that way. So we've been trying to figure out with industry, what's the pro, what challenges do you have in the pipeline? What's the turnaround for reviews? And what can we set as a likely target? As we continue those conversations, I gladly provide counsel with an update. Uh, in terms of what, what's come out of, of the work that we've done with the state. But at this moment, we haven't set any specific targets around number of licenses to be issued.
Is there any other challenge besides the, the licensing and like the, the length that it takes to, to get a license? Are there any other challenges that you're also trying to work through with the Department of Finance?
Yeah, so I think, I think from that perspective, that's, that's the primary issue.
It's just how long it takes?
It's how long it takes, eligibility criteria, like what's required to actually apply for a license and things along that lines. Some of the other things that, that, that we're trying to sort out in addition to the regu, the regulatory end. Is how can we build education and dexterity into the space? So, and, and by dexterity, what I mean is making sure that the talent and the resources that are necessary to grow the industry are, are native in New York. So I, I, you, you've made a hint of this earlier in terms of the mayor saying that he would like crypto, crypto or blockchain related curriculum in schools. Over the past year, you've seen that we've introduced video game related, video game creation related curriculum into schools. And our hope is that as we continue throughout the year, and as we enter into the next school year, we can look at. Adding more tech related curriculum, more relevant tech related curriculum into the schools. So we're looking to attack, not attack, but to, 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 um. We're looking to build the ecosystem through increasing the amount of education that's done into the space. Also making sure that a regulatory fair work, framework that exists in New York is fair and reasonable. And it doesn't create an artificial barrier to entry for many. And then the third part of it is making sure that we continue to have the conversation. So that as the landscape changes, that we can adjust accordingly.
Thank you. Um, now I want to switch over to, to blockchain because I, you know, I, I get the sense that this is kind of more where the focus, where the city's focus is. Can you share a little bit, um, you know, what, as much as you can share, like what, what is, um. What is the city looking to do with blockchain applications? Like how much can you share kind of like where you all are in the process of exploring? Like what are some of the things that we can look forward to? What are some of those conversations or initiatives looking like?
So for, for the city, when we look at blockchain related tech and, um. And what, what I'd like to, to, to say on that front is that we, we try to be realistic or reasonable around where we apply. These types of technologies, right? I mean, you have a hype cycle of sorts that comes out when there's new technology that emerges, right? So you have, you know, your peak of inflated expectations, trough of disillusionment. And then you stabilize into the reality of what the technology can actually do. So as New, for New York City, we, we, we try to pay attention to the use cases that apply to the areas where we have challenges. And where our constituents have challenges. A very good example of that is proof of vitality records, life and death records, right? Birth certificates, things along that lines. Also things like deed and property records. Right now, you, like for, you know, the mortgage industry, right? You have to pay a company to do research to figure out who has the original title or deed for the home. So that as the sales conducted, that the real deed and title can be signed and issued to the new purchaser of the home. So what, how good would it be in the world if we had something that you could validate in an instant? Who owns the property, all the criteria around the property, anyone that has a lien or, or, or an entitlement to the property. And then be able to facilitate a seamless transfer within minutes versus taking days and having to pay someone to do. That's the ways that the city is exploring using blockchain. Things that can remove friction from processes that are highly dependent on external parties fulfilling things that should be simple. Now, beyond, beyond that use case of, um. You know, creating a more transparent and frictionless process to access those, those important records. We're also looking at use cases where we, as I mentioned before, could leverage third party providers to bridge the gap between. What we can do from a financial perspective. So looking and having conversations with, with companies like Coinbase, PayPal, looking at how we can leverage their payment platforms. To take intake payments and settle city debt, right, with crypto, but not actually holding the crypto ourselves. Right? So I think those are, those are two primary ways that we're investigating at the moment.
Thank you. Um, and so I, I'm very curious about the deed fraud. I think it's really innovative. At the council, we have a whole coalition of members and community groups that are really trying to target this. Because it is a very real issue, especially, especially in black and brown communities, immigrant communities, um, and, and our senior population. So have you all gotten as far as kind of thinking through the best way to package that for these homeowners? For example, to secure their deeds, right? To kind of prevent that very specific tactic of like getting folks to, it was very predatory, right? And so they get folks unknowingly to sign away their, their deed. Is there a technical way that you can share with us how that, uh, using blockchain would, would prevent that logistically?
Yeah, so I think, I think there's, there's, we're, we're talking about two separate problems. So the predatory act of going into someone or someone that's, you know, older or someone that, that may not be as savvy. And getting them to sign a paper that signs their house away. Blockchain can't stop that from happening. But what blockchain can do is that if you're going to purchase a home, instead of waiting to close until you get your title, which may extend you a couple of days. Or a couple of weeks. What it will do is it, it can create the ability to produce that vital record or that, that important record in an instant to say. Oh, I don't have to search for the property record because I now know who owns the home and I validated that with New York City who owns the deed. So I think like that portion of it is something that we, we can solve a blockchain. In terms of what you do with deed fraud and like the theft of, the theft of deeds and, and things along that nature. Where, where someone literally signs a paper and signs their rights away. We, we have to continue what we're doing with financial literacy to make sure that people know what they're signing and things along that lines.
Sorry, I apologize. I couldn't, I couldn't listen to two people at once. My question is about the, um, kind of how the agency or how you all think about, um. Giving that information to, to folks, right? Just like a digital, from a digital divide component. I think that that's fair. I think that makes sense what you're saying. But have you all thought about like how is the best way to package that to our communities? So that they have access to these devices, so that they understand blockchain, so that like what is the best way? Or have you all explored that yet? The best way to kind of empower communities to know this?
Yeah, so one of the things that, that again, I'd reaffirm on, on the mayor's behalf. Is the mayor has said this a number of times publicly, that we are living in a digital world. And day by day, that chasm, i- it's gone from a divide to a chasm widens, right? And we have to do what's necessary to close that as quick as possible. Which is why in the beginning of the administration, one of the things that we tried to focus on is digital equity. Working with many, many on council, I see council member Juan here, right? Who helped, um, and, and of course Chair, uh, who helped. You, you helped us push, push the barriers to get things like Big Apple Connect out so that we could get broadband into communities. That's been historically left behind from access to those types of assets. In addition to what we're doing, what we've done with Big Apple Connect, we're also looking at programs where we can partner with other entities to provide devices. And in addition to devices, we're working on providing some digital skills and literacy training to help folks re-enter the workforce. That may have been, um, setback after the pandemic. So I think for us, eh, from a digital equity perspective. This administration in one year has provided more free access to broadband than any administration had done over the last 10 years. And I think we are going to continue to push the boundaries when it comes to making sure that those that historically have not had. Gets access so that they can continue to grow. I mean, New York City, right now, we're the 10th largest economy globally. And we, we managed to be the 10th largest economy when over 40, when over 40% of the people that live in public housing don't have access to broadband. If we could close that gap down significantly, imagine how much stronger we could be.
I want to acknowledge Councilmember Juan who has a question, and then we'll perhaps pass it over to Councilmember Palladino for their questions. But we're not done on blockchain, okay?
Oh, no, no.
Settle in, get comfortable.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, good.
Thank you so much, Chair Gutierrez, and thank you so much, uh, CTO Frazier and your team for being here. This is by far one of the most exciting hearings I've been to. Thank you, Chair Gutierrez. Yeah, cryptocurrencies, blockchains and digital wallet. We are really moving forward in the city. So when I think about blockchain, so we are talking about a lot of different things and I don't want people to mix them up. But when we talk about blockchain, I think the simplest way to put it, especially as contracts chair, is now we're going to have. Extreme transparency and accountability to a level that we have not had in our federal government, state government, city government. We hear about extreme spending, like for example, the Department of Defense in Washington DC has a gold ass toilet. Why do we have a gold toilet? I don't know. Where did that money come from? I don't know. Where are our taxpayer dollars going? I don't know. But that means that, for example, right now Whole Foods or Amazon is currently using blockchain technology to say, if I buy this water bottle from their store. I can now use blockchain, which they have used, to figure out where did my lychee come from within my drink? And you can trace back every single part that has sourced this sale. From the moment the lychee was picked from a farm in a tree to the factory which manufactured this tea. So that is a level of technology that we're able to think about bringing into New York City. And this is something that we need to start to embrace and work towards. So I thank you for beginning this journey. And when I think about blockchain for contracts, do you know, and you already know this, but the amount of excuses that I've gotten from NICA. From parks where they say, oh, we have a procurement issue. Okay, we have a procurement issue because of COVID, but where is the issue? What part in this procurement process are you telling me that there's a holdup and with which contractor or vendor is this holdup? And now what you'll be able to do is actually identify. And if we wanted to make it public, we could have it public and there won't be duplications, there will be less fraud, et cetera. So I'm really excited about it, but I'm also realistic. And when I think about even the current procurement process that I'm trying to reform with the controller and the mayor's office. Right now, I have a lot of concerns on centralization of data. Cause I think blockchain is amazing, but we also have to have all the backend of the ecosystem primed and ready for this. So I would love to hear more on the background of what your team is currently doing to prepare our city to even be at a place where we have centralization of data. And we actually have updated enterprise licenses for our government where I'm still working off of, I believe, a 2016 outlook. You know, so I would love to hear more about those updates.
Oh, fantastic. So I think that, that, that's great questions and I, we, we can get into the weeds on this one. So I, I, I think, as I mentioned before, it's like when you start, um. On day one, when you walk in, there's a lot of expectations that you have walking in the door in terms of what you want to do. What you need to do, and then you're dealt with the reality of what, of, instead of what you want to do, like what, what actually needs to get done now. And to your point, a lot of the challenges that we have around data sharing, they're very real challenges. So over the years, it was an effort to put in place to have a data lake of sorts within the city. But some of the challenges that we have is that there, there wasn't an effort to put an MDM solution in place. And for those that are saying with MDM, whether you're looking at master data management. It's like if I share something with you, we all have a common understanding of what a person is, what a place is, what, what a thing is, right? We, we, we all understand that this is what it is. So what we're in the process of doing right now, and we've put, put this out on the, um. OTI strategic plan, which is available publicly. We're working on building a New York City. We're working on building a New York City stat, right? So to many, to, to a lot of what you've said, it's like, how can we measure a constituent experience that takes place across multiple agencies? So a good example of that is like, let's say, um, you're in the process of, uh, doing construction on your home, right? And you need permits so that you can, you can do a remodel, right? And then the remodel is significant and it requires, uh, a certificate of occupancy before you go back into that house. Now in that process, you may deal with a number of agencies. DOB, DEP, DOT, Parks Department, the, the list can, can be FDNY for sprinkle inspections. But as it stands right now, those experiences are disjointed. And there's no way that, that any of those agencies can look at a person and say where they've traveled across that journey. So very similar to what you've said, um, in terms of what Amazon is doing, Whole Foods is doing around tra- tracing the lychee that's actually in the, in the, the juice. Being able to trace a transaction back from its origin, like when did this person file for a permit? From when the, when was the project approved to how long it took to get the certificate of occupancy? And where in each step of the process that they ran into a bottleneck within the city, city agency? That's the point that we're trying to get to now.
So are you able to enforce the agencies to have a centralization of data? Because currently we don't have that at all and what are we doing? Are we, are we going to partner with AWS or Microsoft, Azure? Like what are we doing in the backend to actually make this possible? Cause it seems like agencies are doing whatever the heck they want.
So I, I think that I, I, I'd use the past tense there and I'd say agencies were doing whatever they wanted. But at the start of the, the administration, this is why this role, the CTO role exists now. So when we look at agency spend across the spectrum, we have broad, we have a broad view into what agencies are doing. And in terms of establish, establishing a centralized data lake, we are in the process of doing that right now. And in terms of the specific partners that we're working with, some of the ones that you mentioned, we are actively working with in that process. Um, and I, I, we, we are moving ever closer to the point where no matter where a transaction takes place across the city, we'd have a common understanding of whether it's a person, a business, a piece of property or an object that's responsible to be licensed by the city, that we have a common understanding of where that happened and anything around any of those four things. So we, we are in the process of building a next generation data lake, applying MDM to it so that there's a common understanding. And when we, with every new application that we add to my city, that context continues to be brought in around what's happening with a person in the city.
So right now, everything you describe, um, I completely agree and aligned with, and that's great to hear. But everything that you are looking at is the perspective from a government administration. So is there going to be transparency to the external world where I, as a constituent, can look at, where is my capital project for parks and why is it two years behind? And why is it off schedule and where did they go wrong in the procurement cycle?
Yeah, so I, I, I'd like to just provide a little bit more clarity. So when we talk about a program like NYC Stat, NYC Stat is one helpful from an operational perspective. So that those that are helping run the city from the administration perspective has li- line of sight into specific bottlenecks and challenges. But then there's a portion of NYC Stat that, that same eye, line of sight that the administration has, being able to make public, right? And it's a process very much like human development, crawl, walk, run, jump, right? We are in the infancy stage, um, like babies dragging our faces on the floor, right? Trying to get upright. And I, as, as you've seen in other models the city has done, like things like ComStat. ComStat started as an internal tool, used to help drive crime conditions down in the city. And now you can go online and you have access to ComStat data real time. That's the space that we're looking to get to with New York City Stat. And it's not just about one agency's data, but it's about operational data across all the agencies themselves.
Okay, that's good to hear. Just for the record, so that we have the commitment of where we're trying to get to because that's what constituents are asking for. And right now we have issues with ComStat, Council Stat, Passport, everything is that, it's not in real time.
Yeah.
And the user interface is not something that's easy for folks to use. And, you know, there's a lot of issues. Um, my next question is for blockchain technology, I think there seems, it's, there is a learning curve. And I think there is an education and awareness component for the general public as well. And is that something that your office has already begun? Or is that something in the pipeline to help with blockchain education awareness and digital wallet awareness? So that people, um, are learning at the same time as the government is moving?
Yeah, so I think, um, some of the things that we've done historically, like hosting the Economic Development Corporation, hosting Blockchain Week to spread broader awareness of who's invent, who's innovating in New York City itself and like what the technology actually can enable. I think that, that's one example, partnering with our colleagues at the Department of Education to look at how we can get this type of information into the pipeline as early as possible is another thing that we are actively doing. And working with higher ed institutions like CUNY to figure out how we can continue to build the workforce and the skills that are necessary for New York to remain relevant is something that we'll continue to do. In addition to that, some of the things that we've mentioned around digital literacy and, and closing the digital divide or digital chasm is it includes literacy in upcoming technologies like blockchain. So as some of these programs mature, I mean, we are, eh, I mentioned the human development process. We are in the process, still in the infancy stage at the moment. But as it matures, we'll gladly keep counsel abreast of the changes and the, and the evolutions that we're making in, in these efforts.
Thank you. My last question is about the digital wallet. I personally, like as a human being, I don't like to carry anything. You'll never see me with a pocketbook, you'll never see me with anything other than my phone. And I use a digital wallet on a daily basis. I don't want a MetroCard, I don't want anything, I just want to tap my phone. So to me, there's a big appeal to it. But when I speak to advocates, one of the biggest concerns that they have is about surveillance and privacy of individuals who are going to be using it for services like EBT, SNAP benefits. And who, that tends to be a lower income level constituency. And for them, because our phones are very easily trackable for location, our spending habits, our patterns of our travel, those are all things that, um, folks who have no choice, right? Because it's about agency. I, I can use a digital wallet because I have the privilege to, to afford my own credit cards. And I have the privilege of being a citizen so that I can have a bank account. But for someone who is dependent on EBT and SNAP benefits and other government services, who does not have the choice of saying, I do not want to have a digital wallet because I don't always want to be tracked. Do you have, um, a plan in place on how to protect people's privacies? And your feedback on the worries for surveillance? And will there be an option still when the digital wallet goes live end of this year? For folks who would prefer to still have a paper-based payment system?
Yeah, so I, I think in many cases, technology and societal evolution is pushing the boundaries of what will be acceptable, right? So we're in a, we're in a state where we still have, and I'll give you a, a very good example, like MetroCards, right? MetroCards exists today, but for how much longer will they, right? And I think we've all seen the direction where the, the city is going, that city, but the MTA is going, where you now have cashless payment options at the turnstiles. So as we continue to evolve from the point where we had, we went from, we went from token, well, we went from paper passes to tokens, from tokens to MetroCards, now from MetroCards to, to, um, paperless transactions or digital transactions. I think very similarly, government transactions and rendering of benefits have to evolve in that same way. When it comes to privacy, um, New York City is one of, especially on the global front. New York City has been a leading advocate for citizen privacy, right? Making sure that we are protecting the information of those that, that provide it. And then also that we are being very transparent when that, when that information is compromised or used in any way that, that, that's, um, that's inappropriate in ways that they don't expect. Eh, and the city, we have, um, our chief privacy officer and our Office of Information Privacy that's focused at analyzing these programs as they go forward. And working on ensuring that we're only using information pursuant to a rendering of benefit and not using it inappropriately to surveil people. Um, one of the things that you pointed out is that, um, you know, the communities that, that typically need access to these benefits are the ones that, that, that have limited options in terms of ways that they can participate in other ways. And I think for us, one of the things that we're focused on is innovating smart, innovating wise without, without violating or compromising on privacy or security. But we want to make sure that those that live in communities that's historically been underserved get access to the maximum amount of benefits that they can. And by moving towards a digital wallet, it gives us the ability, as I mentioned, to do incentive matching to make sure that you spend a dollar on something healthy, you give you a dollar more, right? In addition to that, it gives us the ability to see, wait a minute, someone is now taking, they're, they're getting SNAP, TANF, they're getting FER FERS, but they're also eligible for all these other programs that they haven't registered for. Gives us a way to proactively serve that information forward to say, hey, we've noticed that you're doing X, Y and Z, you're also eligible for this. Are you willing or do you want to apply for these programs? So again, we can get more benefits into, to the communities that need it. None of these programs are focused around surveillance. And historically, especially around our health and human services data, we've never put New York City in a position where we've taken, where we've used that data towards surveil someone beyond, to surveil anyone in any way, shape or form beyond rendering benefits. And we continue to keep it that way.
For the record, you also, could you put on the record, um, to confirm that New York City would not sell the data to any third parties?
I know, we, we, we have no intention to sell the data to any third parties. And I think that, that, that's never been a practice that the city is actively engaged in.
And will there be a warrant needed in the case that there, that NYPD wants data on a civic individual who receives those benefits currently?
So I, I'd, I'd be very, very careful when we're talking about things around the public safety space. And the reason why I say that is, um, what we want for those that live in the city is a fair and equitable experience. We want to make sure that people get, um, the services and the support that they need. And I think when it comes to things like rendering food benefits and using, like e- using a digital wallet to, to get food, like, under any circumstance where there is a need for that sort of information from a law enforcement perspective, appropriate channels will be rendered as they are today, where warrants are served, so on and so forth, and information is produced pursuant to a warrant, right? And I think that that practice will continue. Um, in the health and human services space, it's a broad ecosystem of things, including things that, that edge into the, 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 um, mental health space. So I would ring fence what I just said around rendering benefits, um, use of digital wallets, things along that nature. But I will not say anything beyond that scope.
Okay, because I think the common citizens who are concerned want to know that they will have the same protections as they would with or without a digital wallet.
Yes.
So that is something that has been coming up. And there was also rumors about social aspects to the digital wallet. Right now, I know that California already has this digital wallet in place. And I'm sure there are other major cities and states that already have this in our country. But, um, I don't know if this is true, but I heard that there were aspects where you consider people's social behaviors on folks who receive these benefits to receive points or extra benefits. For example, like if you want more money for your SNAP, et cetera. And I don't know if this is true, but if you could address it, we would appreciate it. Cause people were comparing it to the CCP government in China where they have a surveillance system or some sort of social con, like social contract connected to a digital wallet where the government will reward you for positive behavior. And then they will also use it to punish you for behavior that they think is not acceptable. For example, during COVID-19, Xi'an and other cities in China, they used the identifications on a digital wallet to forbid people to travel outside of a city for X reasons, even if they had or had not had COVID, because they wanted to run to another city out of safety reasons. But they said, well, you have these, um, negative behaviors on your records, so therefore you may not travel. So could you say if that is something that you all are considering or not?
Yeah, sure, sure, sure thing. So I think punitive actions has, based on the use of a digital wallet, is something that we have never considered. And I think that, um, when you look at, and again, um, the societal differences between what's acceptable in the US and what's acceptable in China are very, very different. And then we have a number of safeguards and controls that extend beyond what government can actually do that prevents us from using data in that sort of way. But I, I, the, the incentive-based behavior in terms of ensuring, um, that we can reward, um, healthy behavior, I mentioned this beginning, in the beginning, right? It's like, we want for New Yorkers to have the best quality of life that they can, including, but they empower them to make the decisions that they want to make. But if someone makes healthy decisions that, you know, that, that can reduce, would reduce mortality, that can increase lifespan, that can increase overall health, having programs where we incentivize better behavior, like that's something that we're actively interested in. I mean, the mayor has gone out and publicly said how much of a difference that lifestyle changes from food has made on his personal life. We've done a number of changes when it comes to food distributed in our public school systems to make sure that our students have healthier options to eat. And we want to continue to make sure that as people make decisions, we can reward those that are making, um, better food or help, more health-conscious food decisions where, where possible. But that's the, the, there, there's no punitive aspect of this where we're looking to take that information, mine it and weaponize it against anyone. That's not, never been the intent of what we.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you so much, CTO Frazier, and thank you so much, um, Chair Gutierrez.
Thank you. Councilmember Menon, uh, next for questions, we have a council member Paladino.
Thank you. How are you this afternoon?
Good, good, good. How about yourself?
Good, good. Okay. Let me first start by saying, uh, the blockchain in its purest form is great. Uh, let me then move on to government intervention with my money. I have a little bit of a problem with that. I don't like being monitored, ever. I think it takes away from our freedoms. I think it's awesome what you want to do with records and getting things done speedily with the department, working in this business that we're in, with the, all our different, uh, DOB and the housing and everything like that. In that form, it's excellent. But when you start to talk to me about what I could buy, healthy, uh, drinks, I don't really care where that drink came from personally. I don't care about its origin. I don't think we should really care. What I do care about is being tracked. I don't like the idea that you're going to monitor people's spending habits, whether they choose to buy healthy foods or whether they choose to buy a bag of potato chips. At what point do you, do you have the ability, once this actually gets into its form? Do you have the ability to say, cut people off? Like in other words, if you're controlling our money, right? Am I on par with this or am I going off a little bit?
No, so I, I guess.
Educate me, cause I'm confused, really confused.
No worries, no worries. I, I, I seek to enlighten. All right. So when, when, when we look at programs like this, what we're talking about is, let's say every month you get $500 in benefits, right? Uh, sorry, every month you get $500 in benefits, right?
$500 in benefits, okay.
That will not change. Your $500 in benefits will be your $500 in benefits and you can use it any way that you choose to.
Right.
But when we talk about creating an incentive around better behavior, instead of having $500 in benefits, let's say you spend, uh, you spent that money towards healthy eating or, or other, um, healthier lifestyle choices and where you distribute that money, being able to give you incentive points to say, all right, instead of having $500 a month, based on how you distribute it, you now have $550 a month. Your entitlements for cash in terms of what you get will always be your entitlement. You can use it the way that you want. And the other thing I should mention with programs like this is seldomly do we ever issue a program like this that isn't opt-in. So if you don't want to opt in to leveraging, um, to taking point, taking part of an incentive-based program and you just want to maintain your spending the way that you maintain it and you don't care about any parts of it. Parts of, of, of how we do deployments like this is making sure that you have the option to do what it is that you want to do.
Okay, I'm asking, I'm going to ask a question. Can you please explain to me the difference? I gotta read my questions because I don't usually read off a paper, everybody knows that. Uh, can you please explain to me the difference between crypto blockchain and record-keeping blockchain?
Okay, so when you look at crypto blockchain, or when you look at crypto as a whole, crypto, I'd, I'd like to, to, to step aside and think about it as like a token currency. So when you look at something like a Bitcoin, Bitcoin is like, I mean, it's like the, the, the concept of like a tangible dollar, right? It's like a US dollar.
Right.
You have the digital equivalent, which is like Bitcoin. Now you step aside and you look at what blockchain, the underlying technology that facilitates the transactions for the distribution and. for the distribution and tra- uh, and dispersment of things like crypto, the foundational technology is built to enable broader sharing of records, right? So it's, it's basically, anytime that something happens, and I guess the best way to put it is like, um, think about your personal bank. At your bank, you know what you have in your bank account, your bank knows what you have in your bank account.
Yes.
All right? And when you do a dispersment, like you write a check and it goes to someone, right? The person that receives the funds knows that you sent them money.
Yeah, peer-to-peer is fine. That I have no problem with.
Right. So now with a distributed ledger technology, everyone would know, right, or there'll be, the moment that you gave someone a dollar, right, or they gave someone some amount. The way a distributed ledger technology works is that everyone that's a part of the chain, every block on the chain, it's written that a dollar left to your account and went somewhere else, right? Now, anyone that goes to reference your account to say, all right, how much, some, someone has written me, you wrote me a check for $300.
Right.
Instead of it having to send that check to your bank so that your bank can validate that you have that money in your account, with technologies like blockchain, the moment that that check is issued, someone could look and say, wait a minute, they wrote a check for $300, but based on what's available in that account, it's only $250. Reject it because it's an invalid transaction. So it creates broader transparency, so that when something, a transaction occurs, there's a more common understanding of what the real truth is versus having one single source of truth.
Okay. Uh, so basically, what I want to know also is title searches. Uh, you're saying, way back you said, so saying that title searches, the times will be reduced when we do title searching?
Yeah, so right now, when you do title searches, you have to ensure that who actually owns the title, it takes, it takes time with, um, usually private entities, working with record, um, the record holder to ensure that who has the actual real title, who owns the property, so on, so forth. By leveraging a technology like blockchain, just like the example I gave with a bank account, in real time, you should be able to pull who owns the property, here are all the attributes around the property, here's the last, and here's a history of all the sales transactions that occurred, and anyone that may have a lien on the property. So by moving to a technology that's more transparent, it gives you the ability to validate in real time versus going through a process where someone has to manually do that.
Okay. What are the recovery and redundancy protocols if we have a successful cyber attack and on a centrally-based blockchain system? That's, what do we do?
So in cases like that, the reason why blockchain is, is such a great technology is in terms of redundancy, you don't have a single source of truth, you have multiple sources of truth. And in an event of a compromise, or something gets hijacked, in order to hijack information or misuse that, you have to, you have to corrupt every block on the chain where that information is written, which is significantly more complicated than doing it in somewhere where you have a single source of truth. So traditional exercises where something is held hostage or, or, um, information is encrypted and you're locked out, it, it becomes significantly harder when you're leveraging a distributed ledger-based technology. And the, the, the thing I'd like to point out is, like, although there's a lot of risk that we hear with things like blockchain, and we hear about, um, um, companies that, that have had issues, places like FTX, I think it, it's important to note that even in situations like FTX, the technology never failed. The problems that we had was misuse of funds, and it was a people-process problem, not a technology problem.
I think what really bothers me the most, um, and I don't know if it bothers anybody else, it, going back to the original, it just seems like there's so much government intrusion right now. I get it, Bitcoin, I, I'm trying to understand it, I'm trying to wrap my head around all of this. But as soon as I hear about, uh, things being done on this phone for everything, people knowing personal stuff, uh, taking the human aspect out of dealing with people, you know, one-on-one, everything goes through a mechanical source. The human element is being lost here. And that, I think, really is what troubles me the most. I know we're tied up in a lot of red tape and a lot of weeds that we have to go through, but I look at it as, in a lot of cases, a personal intrusion on people's privacy. You know, there's, there's privacy issues here that I, I really truly believe in time, everything sounds great in the beginning, but five and 10 years down the road, this is like something out of a science fiction movie. And I don't like it. I mean, I really don't. I feel as soon as we give an inch, we take a hand, and as soon as we take a hand, we take an arm. And then before you know it, you're all in, and you don't know how you got there. Now, we're at the very beginning stages of what sounds like could be an absolutely wonderful, uh, program setup, that's this new way of doing things. But once again, it comes down to, please, let, I'm begging you, please, take the time that's really required so that we could do things the right way. We've seen this city jump off bridges here with, you know, different legalization of different things without infrastructure in place. I think that troubles me the most. We pass things through too quickly. We don't put the spine with it. We don't put the, 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 uh, foundation in. I, it troubles me terribly when I could go to the store and I want to buy something. Here, I smoke cigarettes. I do. I smoke. And I don't mind the fact that I smoke. And if I control my smoking, that's my business. If I'm having a bad week and I smoke a pack of cigarettes a day and I have to buy another pack in one day, or whatever it is, I don't want that to be anybody's business. Now it's out in the world, everybody knows Vicky Palladino smokes. The bottom line is, I want, I don't want an invasion of privacy. I really don't.
No, I know, but now everybody.
Now, I don't care. It doesn't matter, because it's my, if I, this is what it's all about, it's about freedom.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm truly worried about how much of our information we're turning over to government.
Yeah.
How much? You know, I don't think it should be anybody's business in this room, what my personal banking habits are. I just don't, and I don't think it should be, uh, member Powers, uh, anybody's business or, or Gutierrez here, nobody. There's, we're, we're, we're crossing a bridge here, that I really think everybody needs to be aware that all this technology is ser- has and served us well. And to go a bit further with it, fine, but once we start to get into our everyday lifestyles and what we do as individuals, that troubles me tremendously. And I think that's really basically what I'm upset about, or what I fear. Let me use the word fear. And I don't get scared easy, but this bothers me, it really does. And maybe we could have a private conversation about it so that you and I could chat and I could really better understand it. I had it explained to me, I just got the, um, the agenda last night. So I wasn't really able to go over all of this, and I'm highlighting, and I'm doing this and that. And somebody who is very knowledgeable was giving me the background. But an hour into New York, into the city here, for me to get my wheres and whatfalls, I, I have not. So I'll be very honest with you, I'm sitting before you as a blank slate. I'd like to be filled in on it, and I'd like to know better what this, what this actually entails. What I heard here so far today makes me nervous. And, uh, I think it, like I said, I think if we just understand that everybody's entitled to this certain amount of privacy, we'll talk more.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for participating. Um, I want to acknowledge Majority Leader Keith Powers, and he's up for questions.
Thank you. I will not be asking for your banking information, that's the good news.
Was that?
I said, no, I will not be asking for your banking information, so.
But we will become public records, is what I'm saying, is what I'm hearing. I mean, not that I care about mine, I'm talking about the, the nine million other people who live in this city. Why should everybody know everybody's move?
People's trying to be cute, don't pay attention.
Oh, no, I love it. He knows that. But my point is, I just don't, it just makes me very nervous.
Um, I, I'm sorry I missed your testimony, I literally have a catch, an opportunity to catch up on it, and I want to appreciate the chair for doing this. I have, uh, questions on a totally different topic, but I'm not going to probably see you guys before budget, until budget, so. Um, I wanted to get an update on the 5G, uh, proposals that include a number of districts, including mine on the Upper East Side. I know we've had an opportunity with your staff to get briefed a bit on it. Um, we have asked, uh, uh, for the administration and of course your agency to take a look at that proposal, and wanted to get an update on it in light of it going, finishing the review period, I believe, or the feedback period now. Um, what are the next steps, and are there any changes at this point to the, to plan on the Upper East Side? Second is, a lot of my constituents have been asking, and elected officials have been asking, why you guys are pursuing the large towers versus the smaller version that seemed to be happening in midtown, the fixtures on the light posts and things like that, so. I don't know, if you could give us an update on, on that, because I'm getting a lot of calls about it from my constituents.
All right, sure thing, sure thing.
Totally different topic.
Commissioner, Commissioner, can you bring in your mic a little bit, I really can't hear, I apologize.
Hold on one second, how about, how about now?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. You know, I, I've never been accused of being quiet before, but I.
No, no, it's the, it's the old-timey acoustics in here, so it's really hard for me to hear.
I was just, I was just, I was just. Yeah, so I, certainly, I, I, we'll, we'll get to that, but before we get to that, I'd just like to say thank you very much. I will gladly take you up on that offer. I'm in the business of making believers, and I tell you, it's like, technology isn't seldomly the problem. It's application and making sure that we have the right safeguards. I want to make sure that we connect on that front, and I gladly do that. Yeah.
I'm not a booker, I'm light slate, I came here today. I'm open to, I'm open to work, and I don't understand a lot, so I'm going forward to our conversation.
And, no, no problem. And onto the 5G space. I think, um, there, there's, there's a number of things that we, we are seeking to do as, as, as an administration. And that, one of those things is ensuring that, along with equity, making sure that those that need access get access. It's also building a pathway so that our infrastructure doesn't become decrepit. And as technology evolves, New York City gets left behind. So when we look at our efforts around 5G and what we're doing specifically in this space, um, there's a number, a number of challenges that we have, especially with infrastructure across the city. And what we're trying to do is make the process for deploying newer technologies the least disruptive as possible. Now, what we're looking at with, with, and I assume when you say 5G, it's more than just a broader 5G ecosystem, it's more so about the Link 5G kiosk, is that correct?
Yes, correct, the new, the new towers.
Yeah. So with the Link 5G kiosk, the key here is, um, the city had gone out over the past couple, over the past couple of years and put out about 2,000 of the legacy Link 4G, which are the smaller units. The Link 5G towers, which are the ones that have the dome that are the same size as the light posts, the reason why the design had changed is, one, we put broader antennas into the devices so that they can distribute that free broadband much further, but in addition to that, the towers actually serve as a home for telecom equipment for the major carriers, so that they can continue to build 5G coverage out across the city. Now, the specific design decisions around the tower for residential use cases versus commercial use cases, we went through a number of iterations, and we went through a number of discussions with the Public Design Commission to come with consensus on where we could go forward. Um, for commercial use cases, you have the ones that you're very familiar with. For residential use cases, we only have um, a, a small portion that we can put out as a proof of concept. We're continuously working with the industry to see if there are other alternatives that we could put out for residential use cases. But at this moment, um, we, we, beyond what we're already doing, we're, we, we haven't, um, we haven't identified any other secondary designs that we're going to go with, but we are evaluating.
And there's also the case of location-specific, where, why in one location versus another? When you say residential, you mean, we're in residential neighborhoods, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So in midtown, in my district also, it seems to be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you guys are relying on some light pole fixture-related, smaller uh, models to be able to do that. Am I incorrect about that, or is that, I, I recall seeing that there was going to be um, not the, the kiosk, but ways to distribute it that are going to be attached to, uh, right-of-way light poles and things like that.
Yeah, so, um, there, there are a number, there are a number of, um, deployment types for 5G equipment. You have carriers that may make a light pole reservation, and they may choose to affix their infrastructure to the side of a light pole. Um, what Link 5G does is it creates a place or landing place, so instead of waiting for carriers to go out to light poles, they can just go to the towers and deploy the technology within the towers themselves. Um, around placement of where the devices go, it's driven by both equity and demand. So in areas like the Upper East Side where it may be less of a necessity, because more folks may have access to broadband, it, there are individuals that come from areas that travel to places like the Museum of Modern Art, right, that when they come out of the museum, they may not have access to any broadband, broadband at a street level, they may have a device but no access to anything. So we have to make sure that when we put this equipment out, we put it so that as individuals travel around the city, they have access.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not arguing that it, it shouldn't exist. Like, I'm not arguing that it shouldn't, uh, exist, it's, I think, where and, and how, and trying to get all the information we need. But I do wonder why, like, the, obviously a lot of the opposition, including my own concerns about it, are like, the you walk down the street, I think every New Yorker stops and looks at the sheer size and monstrosity of these new towers, and it seems to be because of the agreement to put the multiple carriers into one location. But there's another option, you're saying, which is to, you let the carriers go out and put them using the fixtures and using the right-of-way, so why, why don't we just continue to rely on that and do a smaller version of the kiosk with, for the broadband, and then you let the carriers do what they need to do, uh, and what they're doing ordinarily in other places?
So we, we are not, we are not removing that as an option, because carriers can still apply for light poles and, and put equipment where they need to put equipment, but what we're doing in deploying the kiosks is one, expediting the amount of free broadband that's available at a street level, and also expediting the deployment timeline. So instead of waiting for, um, waiting for a period or being able to lose opportunity to deploy your equipment on a specific pole because someone else has made a reservation, we now have a universal landing spot where you can, all three carriers, major carriers can deploy their equipment.
And they'll pay for access to that?
That, that is correct.
I mean, it does feel like part of that is the financial arrangement, it's arrayed with them too, to be able to then fund, help fund Link and the expansion of it as well, which I think
Exactly.
people have identified as being maybe the motivating force here when there's other options that are available. But anyway, I'll follow up with you, I don't want to take all the time on this hearing, but I think Chair Gutierrez for giving me time.
I, I appreciate the question, and I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Um, all right, thank you. I have a, a few more questions, um, related to, to blockchain, and I appreciate all the time and, and, um, the, the, the comprehensive answers. Um, I wanted to understand, I think, kind of going off of what, uh, Councilmember Palladino mentioned, just kind of like, this is, this is complicated stuff, right, and, and it's also, it's happening around us as we're learning about it all at the same time. So I, um, I want to ask if there are resources that exist for any senior members of the administration utilizing, um, of the senior, uh, senior members of the administration to learn more about crypto and blockchain, blockchain technologies? Like, how are you kind of talking, or like, what, what is the best way or resources that you are using to kind of like, talk to folks about blockchain in the agency? And specifically, folks that are like, leading some of these, um, initiatives? Like, what is the best way that you are all, that you are connecting those resources to the, to your own team and your own staff?
Yeah, so when we look at broader, um, when we look at a broader set of tech priorities across the city, and where agencies are investing, and we identify opportunities where this sort of technology could be useful, the way that we typically do that is we bring in the agencies that have those specific work streams, and we have conversations around what the intent, what you're trying to accomplish, and illuminate them on some of the things that are possible using that sort of, that, that specific technology. Um, beyond that, in terms of broader awareness, uh, working, again, with our partners at EDC, working with the Department of Education, and a number of our other partners to get information out around what blockchain is, what crypto is, and what you should look for, like, that, that stuff that we, we do on a day-to-day basis. In addition to that, we're looking to bring in two additional resources that are going to focus on digital, digital assets and, uh, digital assets and, um, blockchain-related technologies to help us build pathways for both public information and internal information around how we plan to apply these technologies for city use cases.
Can you share, um, Commissioner, if you have any knowledge of the previous administration doing anything around blockchain, or blockchain education, or blockchain applications?
Uh, uh, unfortunately, at this moment, I, I cannot attest to specific activities outside of the economic developments, corporations work for blockchain week. Like I said, it's, it's existed for the better part of the last decade. And outside of that explicitly, there, there isn't something that I can point. And outside of that explicitly, there, there isn't something that I can point to.
Okay, and I want to now raise questions about the positions that you mentioned in your testimony. And you can confirm if we have this right because we pulled this off the, the website. A list, OTI has a listed opening for policy advisor and digital assets and blockchain. Can you explain a little bit or clarify what the role of this policy advisor is?
Yeah, so in addition to, one of the things that I think we often get stymied by, and I mentioned this is sometimes overregulation, creating policies in areas where we don't understand. And then also having initiatives that are scattershot. So instead of having initiatives that represent a broad set of use cases from a technology like blockchain championed in, in different agencies, having, having individuals that are capable of aligning the policy across the city, creating strategies around where we will invest in managing the deployments of those related technologies and the efficacy thereof is something that's very important for the administration. So when we put the posting out, well, one of the things that we look for is finding someone from industry that has done this work in a major way and that's capable of being, of looking at the key success factors and driving that for the government-specific use cases. So that, that, that's the key behind the roles that we are looking for. A champion or champions across the city that can lead these efforts for us.
And when was the posting made available?
So the posting went out, I believe, in the mid-part of last year. We've conducted, you know, several interviews and we're still trying to figure, find the right, the right individuals to fill the role.
And it's two positions, the same role as.
That is correct.
Okay, and they've not been filled?
No, not yet.
Okay.
But those that are interested and that are watching, they should apply.
Well, I think this is an opportunity, right? You mentioned it a little bit, right? But what, what's, what candidate are you looking for?
So we're looking for someone that, that one has the, the experience in industry, working on products or programs associated with us, one that, those that understand foundationally how the technology works. And then ones that, that have product or program management experience, leading those types of, like, leading technology initiatives or product initiatives at large, right? So for us, it's, it's more than just finding someone that has a general awareness of what blockchain is or a general awareness of what any specific product is. But it's someone that's capable of taking that information, applying it, and helping us drive initiatives forward.
Would this, or would these two policy advisors be a part of the blockchain committee or working group?
They, they would be.
They would be. And would they also be talking directly to agencies about kind of a lot of the stuff that you mentioned today? Just how to better, you know, integrate all of these services? How involved do you see them in the, you know, the evolution of the MyCity app or the digital wallet, for example?
I, I see them as being a significant part of that, of those efforts, right? And when I, when you say speaking with agencies, anyone that's looking to invest in these sort of technologies and looking to leverage them, I think as a city, we have to have a cohesive strategy around what we're doing and it can't be, it can't be scattershot. So making sure that we have resources that are positioned to hear from agencies where they're looking to spend, hear from agencies on the use cases that they're looking to deploy, being able to bring that up to the senior most level and being able to rationalize where we're going to go first, I think like that, that's critical. Or else we'll find ourselves in a position where we're investing in things that will have short shelf lives.
The other position that we came across was under HRA. It's a position, it's Director Security Operations Center specializing in blockchain technology. And I know that's with a different agency, but do you know about the ongoings of any blockchain-related projects by HRA or whether they're planning to launch any?
So a lot of the positions that are posted, right, just like the policy advisor positions are, are in anticipation of what's to come, right? And we can't wait.
That's what we're doing here.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and we can't wait until we actually start building products or building dependencies to start to find the talent. And given the, the difficulty or the competitiveness on the talent pipeline, especially in the technology space, we're looking to create a foundation across the city of capable people that are, that can help lead the next generation of investments from a tech perspective, and that's one such role.
Okay, do you, and I'm, do you have a sense if, if HRA is planning on launching a specific project related to blockchain?
So I think as we speak about vitality records, as we, as we speak about information sharing, as we speak about broader transparency around creating incentives and behavior, there's, there's a number of areas where blockchain and the specific benefits that come with blockchain-related technology can be used in that space. And I think that that's, that's, those are the primary drivers for identifying resources that are, that are capable of doing that.
And in that event, would OTI have oversight?
Yeah, if it's technology in New York City, there's no technology in New York City where the Office of Tech and Innovation doesn't have line of sight.
Okay, can you share if at all blockchain is currently being implemented in any city agencies or operations?
So beyond the pilot that we mentioned at Department of Finance that we're looking for around title management, deed management, and beyond some of the things that we've done already, I mean, as, as councils where the mayor took his first three paychecks and, and crypto, we, we're, and what we're doing around managing payments as a pilot. In those areas, those are the areas where we're explicitly actively working on, on, on projects or products. And beyond that, I think as the landscape evolves, we gladly keep council aware.
Great. Can you speak a little bit more about, you mentioned just, just a minute ago about the incentives for healthy behavior? Can you explain a little bit more about that is and a timeline or status?
So I, conceptually, that's, that's what we'd like to do. The timeline and status is fairly dependent on integration complexity. So right now, the first phase of what we're looking to accomplish with the digital wallet is focused on incentives that are exclusively rendered by the city. So when you think about fare fares and subway-related incentives, those are things that the city actually does cash dispersments on. So being able to take those types of, those types of dispersments and move them into a centralized digital wallet, that's something that we're looking at in the, in the near term. Now, beyond that use case, SNAP, WIC, TANF, like other benefits that are rendered at a federal level and administered by the state, we are evaluating pathways to get there, but we, we're not at that stage yet. So I can't tell you specific timeline beyond the fact that by the end of the year, we will have a version of the digital wallet and it will be used to, to fulfill benefits that are issued and managed by the city.
Thank you. I want to just pull back on digital ID again, and I know Councilmember Palladino brought us some, some concerns. But if you could just share with us on the record regarding digital ID that's going to be implemented for city services, who should have access to that data and would the ID be built on a, on a public blockchain?
Yeah, so I, I think that in terms of where the ID will be built, I can't, I cannot confirm any of that at the moment. But in terms of who should have access to the data, we want to ensure that people that need access get access and it's controlled in the ways that they typically control today. So those that work in the health and human services space that need access to data, they get access. But the folks that need access to health and human services data are a specific group, a part of a specific set of agencies that are focused on a specific mission. And that information is controlled and isolated so that those that work on the operational end or the public safety end doesn't get, inadvertently get access to that type of information. So I'd say the typical ring fencing, ring fencing that's done today around operational need and business need is what will continue to persist into the next and into the controls that are placed around digital IDs.
And are you exploring biometric technology, like facial, facial recognition or iris scans or fingerprints along, to be used with digital IDs?
So now, at, at this moment, there, there aren't any active plans for using biometrics. The one, the one exception that I will point out is on your smartphone right now, on your iPhone or your Android, you have the device, each one of those devices have a security enclave. So, you know, you open up your phone, you want to use Apple Pay, your face scans. Those are capabilities that are intrinsic in the device. None of those biometric data, none of that biometric data is shared with the city. It's just something that's used to secure your identity. So outside of those use cases, which are again intrinsic in the devices, there, there are no exclusive plans in that front.
Okay, thank you. Next, I just want to ask a question on behalf of the Public Advocates Office. Has OTI considered contracting with a blockchain technology contractor at this point?
So in, in general, we have considered using entities that are native, that have native technologies that operate in blockchain and those that have experience in the space. In terms of contracting vehicles, we, we would take advantage of any of the existing contract vehicles that we have, whether it be, you know, federal GSA, state OGS, or one of the city requirements contracts. And from there, anything of significant size or scale would require RFP, RFI process for us to do. But beyond broadly considering, there's no, there's no.
There's no conversations, there's no, active, okay, okay. Great, so I just want to be able to get this in a conclusive way because, you know, I think that the purpose of this hearing was to kind of introduce what the city is doing, kind of like what the council wants, how the council wants to work with, with OTI, for example. And I just want to be able for you to like summarize a lot of what was raised today regarding kind of what is the reality? What is the power of blockchain and how it can continue to empower New Yorkers? And like where we are, the reality of it. And I say it because, you know, we were here maybe around the same time last year talking about the MyCity app and the, the launch date has been pushed back a little bit. I remember Gail, Councilmember Brewer, gave you a little bit of a hard time saying, you know, I'm a non-believer. And now we're hearing that the MyCity app will be ready by the end of this first quarter. So I just want to be able to, to have you kind of summarize a little bit about not just the MyCity app and, and how confident are you in the, in the launch of this by the end of this quarter?
On the launch.
The MyCity app?
Oh, I'm very confident.
Have you seen it? Have you tested it out? Have you looked at it? What's the color scheme? Give me some deets.
So we've seen it, we've tested it. Not only have we tested it, but we have had New Yorkers test it. So the way that we've done our testing and our design, it's human-centric. So those that's already applied for childcare benefits, as they go through the pipeline, we've asked, man, you just went through that, that was a little cumbersome. Can you test this out and give us feedback based on this thing that we're designing and tell us how you feel about it? We've incorporated feedback from those that, that have, that are actively receiving benefits or that have applied from benefits and we've incorporated into the new portal. Now, the product is, is, is built, it's currently being tested and validated. And what, like I said before, with New York City, we can't afford to put out something that's half-baked. We have to make sure that it's the right thing. And if that means pushing it by a day or a week or a month, that's what we'll do.
Or a whole, like a whole half of a year?
Uh, no, we, we had a plan, the initial plan was to go live by, by.
Fall, you gave me a season.
November, November of '22. We are now in February of '23, which is, you know, a moderate three-month slip. And when I say end of second quarter, it could be live as soon as.
No, you said first quarter.
I mean, end of first quarter, it could be live as soon as next week or by the end of March. But certainly, within the next couple of weeks, it will go live.
Okay, I'm excited. I'm looking forward to, to what it looks like. And then related to the, the digital wallet, is that also, just to confirm, you said we could potentially see it by the end of?
The year.
The end of this calendar year?
Yep, so we, we've actively pursued a contract, which is on the cusp of being issued.
Was there an RFP for that?
There was an RFP for it.
Okay. Can you share any information about who's designated?
So I, I cannot do that until the contract's issued, but what I will do is we can follow up offline and we can go through the details of what was put out.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, I, I would hope that a lot of what we're raising today just about, you know, security and all that stuff is being implemented or is like worked into the expectation of the RFP. And I'm sure we will, we will convene again before the, the launch of that. I'm also looking forward to that. Is there anything else, Commissioner, that you could say tied to, I think, some of the remarks that the mayor has made? I think he's been very enthusiastic about the future of crypto, about New York kind of being that, that Mecca of like welcoming these exchange companies. I know, for example, he made it very public, the, the first few paychecks were then invested into crypto. Can you share if that's, if that's something that he's still very much looking to do? And, you know, how we can look to him as this leader? I think it's important for us to really get a sense of like, you know, he's making this comment, you are as well. And how can we have like firm commitments and firm timelines? Again, knowing that this is fluid, but I think it's really important, you know, we don't, we don't have this, this large window, there's no guarantee. So if there's anything that you could speak to, whether or not the mayor is like still very much championing this, if he's still looking to invest in crypto, and, you know, how, how much trust can we have about these timelines that you are sharing with us? I, I want to be a believer, Commissioner. I know that you, you say this, but I, you know, I, we're a little, we haven't been able to fall within those timelines.
Yeah, so what, what I, what I'd say is, and how much the mayor believes in this and like, you said, the mayor made commitments. As the mayor ran on the platform to get stuff done, that, that's what we're here to do, get stuff done. And the reality of the situation is, in order to get some stuff done, right? We have to create priorities of where we focus. And in some of the things that we tackled in the first year, digital equity, public safety, some of the things that we've pushed on the technology boundaries, those were necessary to come before some of the things that we're working on now. And I think, just to reaffirm the mayor's commitment, when it comes to helping those that are part of the unbanked and underbanked community, about getting access to the information so that they can build wealth and pathways out of poverty, about leveraging new and emerging technologies in the city and letting New York City continue to be the fertile ground for technology, the mayor is all in, as I am all in. And when I look at it, New York City over the past couple of years has maintained its position as the number two when it comes to startup tech, the, across the, across the global landscape. And we, we plan to push that further and eventually become number one. So the mayor has no shortage of vision and insight when it comes to the possibilities of what we can do. I think for us, the key is, again, emerging in ways that only make sense and that are measured. We, we don't want to be like other cities that emerge and they create these tokens and these currencies and then all of a sudden they're defunct, right? Whenever New York City's in the market and it's in the game, it's in the game for the long term, not for short-term victories. So from this administration, you'll continue to see a commitment for doing not just the thing that we say that we're going to do. It won't be the, in some cases, it won't be the fastest thing, but it will be the right thing for the people of the city.
Thank you. What, this is a serious question, like what are some of the things, you just, you just alluded to it, right? Like, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We don't want to invest in something like a coin that, you know, didn't work, didn't necessarily work in, in Florida. What are some of the factors that determine whether blockchain technology is a good fit for, for a project? And like, what are some of those things where you're saying absolutely not, like this is not going to work? Or some of the things that you've learned throughout this process that you know blockchain is absolutely not going to be a good fit for?
Yeah, so I, I'd say for us, we coalesce around, instead of looking for the things that, 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 that doesn't necessarily work, we look at the things that work extremely well. So when we look at it for records management and creating higher visibility around transactions as they conduct, blockchain is a great use case for that, that, that sort, for, for that, a great solve for that use case. And that's where we're jumping in. The market has proved that it's very, it's very effective for that use case. And there's a lot of success that we've seen, not just domestically but internationally, around leveraging blockchain to remove friction from those types of processes. Now, in areas where we look to jump in, in some of the more volatile spaces, those are areas where we have to say, again, prioritize where the city is going to invest based on not what's cool and flashy, but what means the most for the people that will leverage the technology. And that's how we drive what we prioritize.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, just back on the, the MyCity piece, because obviously, you know, the childcare portion is the first phase. Can you share a timeline on kind of what the rest of the evolution, what are the next benchmarks that we can look forward to? And like, when, when can you say confidently you will feel it's fully launched?
So I, I'd say, we've got the first phase, it's coming out by the end of the first quarter. Beyond what you're going to see.
It'd be tomorrow.
Could be, could, it could be as soon as next week. If it was tomorrow, I'd tell you here it's.
No, I would hope.
It could be as soon as next week, could be as late as last week of March, but we expect it sooner rather than later. When we look at other things that are coming or expected to come out of the MyCity universe, we have things like business portals and job seeker portals, those that are interested in, in. we have things like, uh, business portals and job seeker portals, those that are interested in, in streamline or getting interactive with the small business community here, being able to streamline some of those benefits, those benefits and application processes. Those that are looking or seeking employment, whether being married with an employer or being pulled into the city workforce, streamlining and simplifying those processes. And those are two of the things that are coming fairly near-term after the childcare portal. And then also, other things in the benefits eligibility space, being able to, as I mentioned with the digital wallet, do things like transportation-related subsidies and things along that lines.
But, and you, but you can't share anything related to that timeline for the meeting?
I, I am reluctant to do so, but when we have a clear line of sight, I can certainly do that. But I can tell you for sure, the MyCity childcare portal will launch before the end of the first quarter of this year.
Commissioner, if we have another hearing and you're here again telling me it's pushed back, there's, I think it's, it's fertile ground to, to wall out a little bit, 'cause I think we've been patiently waiting.
I, I, I feel like if it were to get pushed back for any reason, it would, it would require something significant.
Okay.
So we did not see the pandemic coming, we did not see, um, a number of other things coming, and I, I will not, um, I'd say barring extenuating circumstances.
That's fair.
It shall, it should be liable.
I think we're looking forward to it, for real, I think it's exciting. So that's, we just wanna be able to bring that back to our communities and, you know, give them a, a timeline, I think that that's, that's warranted.
And if there's no extenuating circumstances, feel free to wall out.
Oh, wall out? Um, okay. Uh, my, uh, next couple of questions, Commissioner, are related to, uh, prior hearings. Um, in August, Commissioner, you testified that the department did a survey of every agency on all tech programs that they, that you have running of significant size and scale, uh, so that OTI could begin to do an assessment, to see areas where you could consolidate, save costs. Um, do you have a sense of where, uh, some of these agency responses to said survey is or assessment is, are specifically DIFDA or DCAST, for example?
Yeah, so we, we've received a response from every agency, and we have a catalog that we put together. Um, the rationale behind how we're moving forward is very similar to how enterprises make decisions around where they invest. Um, I, I guess the best way I can put this is, if you think about it from the landscape of, uh, a company that's done an M&amp;A, uh, merger, uh, merger and acquisition, right, pulled some, another company in, um, there are lots of redundancies in systems that perform the same function, like HR, like benefits processing, like a number of things like that. So what we've, what we've done is we've looked across the city's tech estate, we've looked at disparate initiatives that are focused on producing the same outcome. And we've eval- and we're currently evaluating how we collapse those. Instead of having ten initiatives that focus on an HR system, how can we bring those down into a single initiative that covers those ten specific use cases, instead of making ten separate investments that will cost something significant? So I, I think we're, we're still in the process, again, with the size and scale of the city and its tech estate. Um, there, there, there are more than a handful of initiatives that exist, and we're in the process of rationalizing and streamlining.
I see. So, but there's nothing, uh, concretely that you can share with me regarding DIFDA and DCAST's responses? And I bring this up because we've, we have legislation within both agencies, and at a hearing that we had, I know that basically their, their response to whether or not they would support these bills were really related to the assessment that the agency was making. So that's why, really why I'm pressed to, to make this, make this ask.
So what we could do, um, following the hearing, I'd gladly meet with counsel and do a, a complete recap of what we have specifically and the pipeline from those entities. And yes, both DIFDA and DCAST had responded and provided insights into any tech programs that they have of significant size or scale.
Yeah, and have you been able to do the same, or have received responses from every single agency at this point?
That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, and, um, from that same hearing in August, we, we, in the same spirit of assessment, we were talking about, um, audits and, and, um, yeah, audits that the, the city does. Does the city conduct audits of its websites, applications, or other online service delivery systems to assess functionality?
Yes, we do.
We do, okay. Are those audits public?
Uh, no, so a lot of those audits might be security-related, it might be accessibility-related. Historically, this, those audits have not been published externally. Of course, for the security stuff, it will point out any vulnerability that may have been identified, which creates risk. In terms of accessibility, we could look at, um, if you'd like to do a review, we can organize a review with counsel to go through some of our findings in the last round of reviews and audits that we've done.
Okay, yeah, that would be, that would be great. Um, and then my, my next question, and sorry to jump back to the MyCity portal, but, um, are there any plans to incorporate blockchain with the MyCity?
So we are evaluating, we are certainly evaluating ways that we can do that in the, in the, in the lenses that I've mentioned before around document management and things along that lines, um, vital record management, document and property management, things along those lines. Um, and then, of course, through leveraging third-party providers to help with payments. Um, but beyond those two specific use cases, there, there isn't anything on the foreground at the moment.
Okay. All right, Commissioner. Those are my sixteen pages of questions. Um, no, I, I thank you for your time, all of you. Um, again, I just think, I think we want to hear more concrete. I know that a lot of this is like working as we go, but we, I think, deserve to understand, especially with the mayor who's championing, uh, the conversations around blockchain and cryptocurrency. We wanna hear more concrete answers and more concrete, concrete timelines. So I'm holding you accountable, not only to the MyCity app, um, which could launch any day between now and the end of this first quarter.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah.
Sounds right?
Yeah.
Um, but also, also this digital wallet. And I, and I think it's fair, right? I hope that you understand that, that, you know, we have these conversations, we wanna continue to be leaders, um, but we have a real responsibility. And as much as you can share with us and our committee, we would be happy to, to continue to support that. We wanna do this responsibly and we wanna continue this relationship.
So I would say, as the great, uh, the great mayor of this fair city would say, if you don't inspect what you expect, everything is suspect. So the work that you're doing now to sort of peel through what's happening, making sure that you set a fair expectation around what happens and continuously inspect to make sure that we're doing what we say we're gonna do, is what we expect in terms of the partnership with counsel. So more than happy to come back to answer any questions that counsel may have, and I look forward to the partnership to come.
Yeah, thank you so much, thank you. Um, next, um, is it, we're gonna go on to the public testimony. Is it okay? We're gonna take two minutes. I hope you can stick around for the public testimony, we're just gonna take a two-minute break, a bathroom break. Is that cool? Thank you.
Thank you again.
Yeah.
...
And we have no, we don't, we don't see you anymore. So we're asking for that same energy to come back and recruiting parents. Because the need is there, and a neighbor was to have none, their neighbor was with long waiting lists. And I talk to the providers and the parents. I'm always in the street talking to them. So I know the need is out there. So you just have to do your due diligence to make sure the word is getting out.
Yes, sir. We will be absolutely further out. Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bellerin.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I think, you know, I first want to recognize that there has been work that I can get here. Uh, I'm sure there's some kind of here in this, in October of last year, and there were issues with invoices, not being able to submit invoices until last one, uh, was submitted. And they, but the bulk invoicing, as some of that, a lot of my directors have said, it's been very helpful. Uh, and I, I also, you know, personally, I want to thank you for the announcement for the extra, uh, special education seats for children of, uh, so incredibly critical to, to them and to their families, uh, who are, you know, very, uh, often facing those challenges, um, uh, in, in our city. Uh, I ju, I, I have a few questions about not the invoicing, but the budgets. You know, the, the schools have to, the CBOs specifically have to submit budgets beforehand, and they have to be approved. If you have the numbers, that's great. If you don't have them, I'd, I'd love to have these numbers. Um, so on average, how many days does it take to approve a CBO budget?
It varies. It could be just, or it, it can be turned around, honestly, within a week. Um, but there is typically, um, exchanges back and forth. So let me give you a few scenarios.
So I, I didn't, should, it's a time, it's not even, like, they're very, it's a time, we'll, we'll, you know, so if you have the number, because in my community, it's months, and this was the same way it was in October, where, um, you know, I have, you know, the CBOs are submitting in July, August, but still, they're not, they're not approved, um, for this school year, for whatever time the school year end, their budget has not been approved. Um, like, do you want to talk about that process, about the rejection process? Do you have the number of how many times budgets are rejected before they are approved?
We can get back to on the exact number of times again. It varies from budget to budget.
Okay. Do you, right, well, that's what the average would help us determine, right? I'm sure some are prepared away. Uh, but, but the average would certainly, like, would tell us after something. How long is a budget allowed to s, do you have an internal, um, measure for how long is a budget allowed to sit pending before it is either rejected or approved?
Budgets are reviewed fairly quickly after they're received. And so that is within a week of receiving it, it should absolutely be reviewed. And then a conversation happens with the provider, whether it's rejected, whether there's an update that needs to be made, whether something is not connected to their actual contract, which is oftentimes the case. So all of those things are taken into consideration. I, unfortunately, one side doesn't fit all, especially when it comes to budgets. But I can absolutely get back to you on any of the average times of, of rejections, turnarounds, et cetera. Now, if you're still outstanding.
Yeah.
And if you have specific cases from your district.
I sure do.
You should reach out directly. Feel free to reach out to myself, to Mark Trager, and we can support looking into what the particulars are.
So I actually love what you said about, you know, improving systems. Doctor, right, you said improving systems. I think that's the point. I mean, we come to these hearings, and you should give us the name of the school, and it's great that you can respond to those individual needs. The DOE in general has responded to my individual needs. But I'm interested in making better systems. And this system right now, I, I, I'm going to give you the, the example, and you'll tell me if this sounds accurate, because this is the way it is for my providers. They submit a budget, and then they have to go online every day and just check to see whether it was rejected or approved. They themselves have to check. And then when they see it's rejected or approved, they themselves have to reach out to the DOE to find out why it was rejected or approved. Is that inaccurate?
That's not. So a provider sends it a budget, and if it is rejected, it is sent back, and there's, it's a technical piece, but it's sent back with comments of exactly what the issues are, what needs to be corrected. And then there's an exchange and a conversation between them and their analysts, whatever that may be. Here's how I can help, here's how I can support.
So there's, there, there's a disconnect, because I have providers telling me that they are not getting an email, they're not getting a phone call, that they are having themselves to check every single day. That may not be a big deal for some of the bigger providers and bigger community centers, but we have, uh, we see, we, we have 3K programs that are really just that. In addition to all the funding issues, they're spending their time checking this website every day, they're not getting the outreach. And when they find out that their budget was rejected, they are reaching out to the DOE. And so if that system that you're saying is in place, great. I am telling you that it's not working, and it's not being, uh, done. Um, and the second part of that is very often, the reason for rejection is because certain documents in the documents tab are not submitted properly. But my providers are telling me that they don't know necessarily where those documents are beforehand, and they're very often resubmitting documents that have already been submitted. And so what is the possibility of you providing a checklist for the, the documents? In addition, I, I know there are some that you say on the list need to be there, but these other documents tab, there are documents that are requested, um, every year, that you can just provide a checklist for our, for our providers, that they don't have to go back and forth, they don't have to do this back and forth.
And you've agreed a report. The checklist exists, um, training exists, there are on, there are, there's webinars. And again, I would argue that big or small customer service needs to be in place.
But you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess, I'm, I have respect for you, but it's.
Excuse me, excuse me, folks. Everyone, please find your seat, please find your seat. We're getting ready to resume. Once again, folks, please find your seat. We're getting ready to resume.
Well, yeah, welcome back, everyone. I'm going to hand it off to our counsel, Irene Byavsky.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. We will now begin public testimony. To accommodate everyone, we'll ask that witnesses limit their testimony to five minutes. And we'll start with witnesses who are here in person, and then we turn to those who are joining us via Zoom. And our first panel includes Brian Doherty, Alan Rach Schaffer. I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. Thank you. And, and Albert Khan. You can start in any order when you're ready.
Thank you. Good after, good afternoon, Chairwoman Gutierrez and members of the New York City Council Committee on Technology. My name is Brian Doherty, and I am the Director of Public Policy for the Bitcoin Association, an educated nonprofit trade association focused on advancing the original vision of the Satoshi Nak, of Satoshi Nakamoto, which is a globally scalable public blockchain for enterprise, government, and individual users to transfer value and data securely and efficiently. I am honored to be before you today and share my views on digital assets and the underlying technology blockchain. First, thank you for hosting this hearing at such a critical juncture. The recent collapse of FTX has left policymakers, media, and the public scrambling to make sense of the situation. There appears to be little question that FTX suffered a critical failure in leadership at best and criminal activity at the worst. Unfortunately, it is also my view that the collapse of FTX may not prove to be an isolated event. The rampant speculation in the digital asset markets, which I often refer to as the crypto casino, has created a complex environment where illicit finance, influencers, and Ponzi schemes can thrive. Proponents of digital assets have advocated that cryptocurrencies can help foster financial inclusion and increase efficiencies. But the fact is that these, that most are only seeking to trick consumers and investors out of their hard-earned money with false promises of future solutions. It is the Bitcoin Association's opinion that blockchain, not crypto, is the real long-term innovation of the future. Organizations can leverage the advantages of an immutable data, of immutable data integrity, improved network security, and microtransaction capabilities of blockchain today. I'm currently collaborating with, um, with developer groups in, in the United States and across the globe, creating state-of-the-art utility applications for cybersecurity, ESG, authenticated carbon sequestration, digital rights management, and several other fields that will be announced later this year. So what could the widespread utilities of blockchain mean for New York? Cyber attacks continue to plague our nation's state, local, and municipal governments. Last year, ha, the last year's hack of illuminate education, a taxpayer-funded software company that New York City Department of Education uses to track and grades and attendance, was compromised with over eight hundred thousand students' personal identification information being stolen. By deploying CertaHash Sentinel Node, a blockchain cybersecurity platform which we developed in collaboration with IBM, local governments can be alerted to unauthorized data modifications and breaches and mitigate the detection time of the da, of a data breach from the current average two hundred and twenty-one days to near instant. Let me repeat, almost immediate real-time intrusion detection. This is a prime example of where the city and the state can immediately benefit from implementing a blockchain infrastructure. Another example of blockchain's widespread utility is i, is in the ticketing industry, a little bit, which you spoke about today. Through a ticketman, a solution built on blockchain, illegal fraudulent ticketing scams are almost completely eliminated. This technology can even be incorporated into the city's public transportation system to improve efficiencies and auditability, all while making it possible to help underserved populations in the process. Moving forward, I believe it is critical that policymakers at all levels, local, state, and federal, take a step back and understand the incredible utility promise that blockchain provides. It is critical that we, as a country, do not throw, take a, throw the baby out with the bathwater approach when distinguishing between blockchain and the crypto casino. I look forward to working with this committee and the mayor to ensure that New York City remains a leader in this emerging technology, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. The next panelist, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez, members of the committee, people who are watching from all sorts of remote locations. I am honored to have the opportunity to appear before you today to provide testimony on the subject of responsible oversight of cryptocurrency and blockchain technology in New York City. My name is Alan Rexchaffin. While the thoughts I share today are my own, personal opinions, I have extensive experience in understanding cryptocurrency and blockchain technology. I am the Chair of the Digital Assets Forum and Lab at the Wilson Center in Washington and a Senior Lecturer of Laws at New York University. The Wilson Center, as you may know, is the think tank created by Congress, the government's think tank. The Digital Asset Forum and Lab has been at the forefront of analyzing the implications and opportunities presented by this rapidly evolving technology. Our work has found that cryptocurrency and blockchain technology may have the potential to provide numerous benefits, including increased financial inclusion, improved financial security and privacy, and greater efficiencies for recording information in a decentralized way. Cryptocurrencies are a use case for blockchain technology. However, it is vital that we are sensitive to the fact that the promising potential use cases for blockchain go far beyond financial instruments and transactions. Indeed, blockchain has been heralded by some as the technology that might, might be implemented to reboot the very infrastructure of the web, so-called Web Three technology. I'm happy to discuss this more during the question and answer period. It is equally important to recognize the potential risks associated with this technology, included, including illicit activities, not the least of which being the potential for bad actors to take advantage of consumers who want in on the game. In recent years, digital assets such as cryptocurrencies have rapidly gained popularity. As the use cases for blockchain grow, it is important for municipalities to consider the role of this evolving technology will play in the lives of all its citizens. Local regulation of digital assets presents a unique challenge because these assets exist in a decentralized and global network. This makes it difficult for a single municipality or entity to regulate digital assets in isolation as its actions can have unintended consequences for individuals and businesses located outside the jurisdiction. Indeed, in two thousand twenty-two, the President of the United States issued an executive order calling on the government to outline standards for regulating digital assets. Congress is also considering how to regulate this technology. The SEC and CFTC are taking positions. The field is crowded with those looking to control and regulate this technology and its use cases. However, municipalities, and in particular, New York City, can play a key role for its residents to protect them and promote the responsible use of digital assets and the adoption of the technological innovations. Specifically for New York City, I would recommend the establishment, the establishment of a blockchain commission whose purpose will be to understand and share with New Yorkers the latest information on the potential of this game-changing technology. This commission might produce a report on the state of the debate, identifying the risks and rewards of the technology, helping New Yorkers to see where they might benefit and what the future holds. The commission should be headed up by a non-political academic who can provide reliable information for council, the administration, and all New Yorkers on the evolution of blockchain technology and its potentials. This can be achieved through a combination of education, outreach, and consumer rate awareness. It would also help business understand what is possible and those who are in the workforce to explore new careers. In conclusion, I would like to emphasize the importance of balancing the need for regulation with the need for innovation and growth in the digital asset industry. By working together with other levels of government, New York City can help ensure that we are aware of the risks and the rewards and the benefits to all stakeholders, including consumers, businesses, and the broader economy. I'm happy to take your questions.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez. My name is Albert Fox Khan. I'm the Executive Director of the Surveillance Technology Oversight Project, a New York-based privacy organization. I'm also a fellow Yale Law School, Harvard Kennedy School, and a practitioner in residence at NYU Law School. I'm here today because we've seen with cryptocurrency a path of destruction forged by con men, charlatans, and those willing to exploit the greed of and dreams of those who seek a payoff from cryptocurrency in order to peddle products that misled and actually enabled outright fraud. But as we explore the transition from a Web Three architecture focused on cryptocurrency to one focused on other novel uses of blockchain, I, I'm quite alarmed to think that New York City would experiment with New Yorkers, make us the guinea pigs for novel and unproven blockchain technologies that really do not serve our interests. In delivering centralized city services to large numbers of individuals, the decentralized blockchain technology that fuels cryptocurrency just doesn't make sense. It is not something that is really applicable to the sorts of problems we're trying to solve. We're delivering the centralized services from single, from agencies, not trying to create a alternative for pathway, uh, sorry, an alternative pathway to trust as cryptocurrency does. The whole point of cryptocurrency is that it is decentralized, not a way for agencies to, you know, work in, from a single point of command and control. Crypt, using blockchain is much more expensive, it's slower to scale, it has so many problems that don't come from traditional databases. And when we hear about the types of things that the city wanted to address, whether it was benefits eligibility or consolidating people's information, none of that requires a blockchain. Quite frankly, we kept hearing the city connect blockchain to other services and IT upgrades that have nothing to do with a decentralized digital infrastructure. Again and again, we, I tried to see how the city would connect the dots, and it failed to. And what I'm quite concerned is that because of the broad-based excitement about blockchain, because people have made fortunes off of it, that we will see an desire to implement blockchain as part of our digital infrastructure at a time when it really only serves the companies that are selling blockchain consulting services. We need to focus on the actual digital infrastructure that will support basic delivery of city services. We need to focus on that sort of tried and true technology. And quite frankly, given the failure to invest in already established forms of digital infrastructure across city agencies, it, it's kind of like trying to, uh, uh, fast-forward through multiple layers of municipal technological development. Instead, we should just be trying to actually get the stuff we already have to work. As far as digital inclusion, as far as financial inclusion, as far as these other important issues, we should be focusing on community-driven, uh, responses, such as investment in, you know, community-based credit unions and other platforms for getting banking resources to New Yorkers. The solutions all too often aren't digital. They aren't high-tech, they aren't novel. It's investing in communities and the infrastructure we need to support New Yorkers, particularly those on the margins. And I would also note, currently in New York, we have none of the privacy protections under law that we would need to prevent these, uh, this information from becoming both a policing tool and yet another data source for ICE. Uh, and with that, I, I would welcome any questions.
Thank you, Albert. I do have some questions. I want to start with, um, Alan and, and Brian. Regarding blockchain and the way that the city could potentially work around that technology, um, have you thought, I know that, um, Alan, you brought up an entirely independent commission. What are some ways in which the city can look at ways of, um, providing oversight to a commission, for example, or like, or the way that the city is planning on integrating blockchain? What are some of the ways that we can provide oversight?
Well, in terms of oversight, uh, the, the way I, I, I see this commission is it's a commission that allows people to understand the evolution of a technology, which I, I agree with my fellow panelists, is, is largely untested. You know, the things that you hear that blockchain can do are mostly theoretical. You know, most of the blockchain transactions that you hear about are moving stuff around that is just like coins on the blockchain. You know, that said, there is the potential for a, a major shift as a result of this. For instance, if you have social media platforms that are no longer controlled by one person, so one person is not watching over everything that I'm doing and everything I'm buying, that's somewhat interesting that they're not gathering in the information that we can hold our own identity. Largely untested and, um, no, no empirical evidence that it works. However, I think it's necessary for a municipality, especially New York City, which really can take the leadership here to explain the evolution of this technology, to understand what's out there and what the potentials are. Because there is a lot of resources going into this area. Um, the graduates from MIT, the, there's a lot of movement, and where the, those people go and where the money goes, that technology is going to be growing. Even if the, the, um, the historically classic technology or the cloud technology is, is better right now, if you put all that money in it and all that resources into the growth in blockchain, that will change the dynamics of what's going on. What I really see the opportunity for the council, for the city, for the mayor, um, to do is to really, um, loop the citizenry of New York into this evolution so it's not a surprise, and so it's not a matter of people in, in a room making decisions for people who aren't in the room.
Thank you. Um, I, I think I share a lot of the concerns that, Albert, you brought up. What we were trying to achieve today from this hearing was like, because this is the oper, because this is the, um, the, the operation of OTI and because of, like, the things that you highlighted, like, it's very hot right now, right? We want, we always, we have a mayor who has, like, publicly referenced his interest in wanting to integrate this a little bit more. It's, it's been a year now. We want to understand what has the research turned up? What can we look forward to? But I think your point, um, uh, Alan, about integrating New Yorkers is vital. I don't think that we've done any due diligence in, like, empowering our communities to understand the volatility of this, um, the, the security issues. And to your point, like, is this actually going to do anything that we, we need it to do? So that's why I'm cur, I'm curious with you all, because I, I realize, um, the level of support, uh, for blockchain technology. I'm curious, um, if you think there is a portion of blockchain technology that is more valuable or applicable to, to the way the city operates?
I, I think anytime you're looking at potential deployment of blockchain, you have to ask a series of questions. How are you using blockchain? Why is that preferable to traditional cloud-based computing? What is the advantage to having that sort of transparency? What, how is that justifying the potential increase in costs? You know, when we're looking, quite frankly, when we were talking, uh, earlier, when we heard the administration justifying potential investment in blockchain, I didn't hear any use cases there which really justified the, an investment in blockchain to deliver that service. That doesn't mean it's impossible that you would have a case where that made sense. But really, uh, you know, we've seen already a lot of investment, uh, including by New York State, in blockchain technology of dubious utility. An example is, you know, the tens of millions spent on Excelsior Pass, uh, the COVID vaccine passport that cost, I believe it was tens of millions of dollars. It, uh, the cost inflated dramatically, and despite claims that it was using blockchain, it's never clear if it actually was using a deployment of the technology. So I, I think there has to be really extensive due diligence to peer beyond a lot of the buzzwords that we hear being used in the contracting space and understand this very, the specifics of how this would benefit New Yorkers.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a great question. Um, and really, I, you have to have rules for the roadway, right? Scaling, security, sustainability, these things matter no matter what technology that you're speaking about. And when you're regarding blockchain technology and, and doing the due diligence and even creating these pilot projects that I fully support for the city and the state, you should set some boundaries there, because there's a great deal of froth in the sense of, I can copy a few lines of code and create my, uh, you know, uh, my city council coin, um, or any coin, right? In just a matter of a few minutes. But the reality is, they don't really have a roadmap, and they don't really have a purpose. As you've heard, uh, even on this panel, uh, the majority of these cryptocurrencies are just kind of a ability to fleece, uh, people out of their money. Um, what I would argue is that as you spend time to investigate these technologies, that you, you know, have some benchmarks, technology benchmarks of how many, how much, uh, transactions per second can the blockchain that you're proposing to do something on? What are the costs of those transactions? As, are they able to contain data? Is that data public, private, or is this some anonymous coin? So these are some basic questions, um, you know, that I'd be more than happy to help, you know, the city, you know, fashion, to give some, uh, boundaries. So that way, when you're doing a pilot project, that the money that is being put into it is actually resulting in something that could scale just even to the city size to provide that utility back to, you know, the constituents. And, you know, I would like to say that there are, there's been so much innovation in this space, and a great deal of what people have learned, whether early on in, you know, two thousand ten or onwards, has changed dramatically. And that includes consensus mechanisms and, you know, all of these difficult terms, you've heard some of them today. And it does require, you know, uh, the, somebody with enough understanding of what has occurred then, where we are now with this technology, and what those differences are. And I'll just give you a key piece. I hear quite often of the energy consumption of Bitcoin, which BTC, which is a competing protocol that shares the same genesis as, uh, other Bitcoin protocols, actually is, it's due to the minimal one megabit size, a block every ten minutes, verse an unbounded size type of Bitcoin protocol which exists today, which turns the tides of energy down to actually, uh, less than two grams per CO2 per transaction compared to twelve hundred grams of CO2, uh, per transaction with BTC today. So I think that there's a great deal of innovation that has occurred, um, and even in revolving around the public-private, uh, sense of this data, and even the, what actually constitutes a blockchain? Because I would argue, a federated, a hybrid, a consortium type of, uh, blockchain is no better than the cloud or, or really serves no other purpose than. than really to kind of trick people into thinking that it is a blockchain. You know, from my point of view and the Bitcoin Association's point of view is that blockchain has to be public, it has to be stable, it has to be secure, and it has to offer microtransactions. If it's not able and capable to do these things, then they're really, it doesn't really qualify as a blockchain, but rather just somebody else's private database. And that immutability and permanence of those records, the microtransactions, the data integrity that we're all very excited about in this space is kind of gone and for naught.
Thank you all so much for your testimonies. I think we'd love to follow up at some point after today's hearing, but I appreciate you all sticking around and for your really, really comprehensive testimonies.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez.
Yes, thank you, everyone. And our next panelists are Julian Klein and Cleve Mesador. You can begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Gutierrez and esteemed members of the committee. I'm honored to be here with you today. I'm Cleve Mesador, Executive Director of the Black Chain Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit focused on education. We work to ensure the public has access to trusted content from reputable sources in order to make informed choices. We have developed strategic partnerships locally in New York City with the New York City Department of Small Business Services and the Zahn Innovation Center at City College to help educate their stakeholders. I come before you as a product of the New York City K-12 Public School System. I grew up in Queens, graduated from Richmond Hill High School, attended SUNY Albany. Previously, I worked in Congress and for the Obama administration. I have been working full-time in crypto for over six years. Today, I will focus on the differences between longstanding exclusionary consumer protection policies and 21st century legislative action that can actually empower and foster meaningful financial inclusion. Please see my testimony, my written testimony for more details, but I'm going to provide a summary. Consumer protection policies, often centered around financial disclosure, they do not provide a clear pathway to advance economic or job growth, nor do they expand access to capital to fuel entrepreneurship or promote wealth creation. Let's learn from the mistakes of the policy debates around the internet in the 1990s. They did not prioritize accessibility, inclusion, workforce training, or financial literacy in those discussions and look at the state of the internet today. Let me step back and provide some context. Black and Latino communities lead national adoption of cryptocurrency. Several data sets have proven that. There have been black and Latino innovators in crypto since its beginnings in 2009. We are not latecomers. We are leading. And we need to be present at these types of forums because our voices matter. We do not just buy and trade cryptocurrencies. We are creators and holders of NFTs and we fuel the DeFi ecosystem and the Web3 marketplace. And we are developing products and services to tackle inequities. The price of cryptocurrency is not our great motivator. It is the potential and the capacity for ownership. But we still need more data because right now there are a lot of assumptions being targeted at us. We are racially profiled as victims of crypto without any facts or data. While the quote-unquote sophisticated retail investors, who are primarily white investors, who are at the core of the Celsius and Terra Luna and FTX collapses, they are not subject to the patriarchy disguised as consumer protection. Consumer protection should not just be targeted at black and brown people. It should be for all consumers. Now, let's be honest, we cannot build wealth without taking calculated risks. And bear markets are part of investing. So we absolutely should be talking about tools to help consumers mitigate risk. But too often, the debate is around banning access. Government actions to empower consumers are just as important as traditional protection policies. Education is the first line of defense against digital asset scams. Our foundation recently published a report infusing digital assets and jump-starting financial literacy in America's K-12 education systems. We highlight that 17 states require at least one financial literacy course to graduate high school. Unfortunately, right now, New York State is not among them, but we can change that. I urge this city council to focus on policies and rules to foster innovation so that entrepreneurs can thrive here. We need to focus on policies to promote economic and job growth in Web3 and in DeFi. We need to focus on measures to ensure entrepreneurs will not be the casualties of enforcement actions. And we need to focus on policies to increase access to capital for entrepreneurs of color and female entrepreneurs. As I close, I want to applaud the city council and this committee for prioritizing this conversation. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez and council members. Thank you for holding this hearing today. I'm Julian Klein, Head of Policy at Tech NYC, which is a member association and advocacy group for the tech community. As the financial capital of the world and the second-largest tech hub in the US, New York City is a crucial market for developing Web3 and blockchain technology. Studies last year found that New York City was ranked the number-two fintech hub in the world and that there were 435 blockchain and cryptocurrency startup companies here, in addition to the over 800 fintech companies in New York. Since these numbers were published, we have been seeing a market correction for cryptocurrencies and platforms, which is an opportunity for companies to revisit their core priorities and concentrate on services that are dedicated to long-term success. New York State's virtual currency licenses have also helped to shield the state from unstable companies. New York is home to a vast community of innovative blockchain, Web3, and decentralized finance companies. These technologies are based on universal and accessible record-keeping, which creates new solutions compared to dated technologies. Blockchain and decentralized finance technologies are being built into various local industries, including banking at Goldman Sachs and BNY Mellon, as well as consumer products like Estee Lauder to help keep track of ingredient supply chains. Virtual currencies and platforms make financial products more accessible for New Yorkers, providing more options to make investments and transfer funds to others quicker and without excessive banking fees. These services not only increase financial options for the underbanked and immigrant communities, but also provide new options for sending funds to family members around the world. Web3 and blockchain technologies can also be incorporated into government operations. The most common uses have been seen in record-keeping, issuing licenses, certificates, and digital IDs. Blockchain technologies are currently being used in California to store car title records and in Rhode Island to allow residents to establish state IDs. Tech NYC encourages the city of New York to continue exploring which agencies, services, and records could benefit from blockchain technology and to develop pilot programs to test these solutions. Contracts from the city to develop these programs will greatly benefit local tech companies and professionals. Additional solutions that have been explored include accepting virtual currencies as payment for licenses, fines, fees, and taxes, as seen in Colorado and Utah. Blockchain technologies can also provide efficient and quicker methods for accepting or requesting payments and tracking supply chains and budgets with the, which the US Department of Homeland Security has been testing. Tech NYC recommends that the city leverage this growing sector and its workforce to modernize city services and record-keeping. This will provide additional benefits and opportunities for companies, both large and small, to partner with the city on pilot programs. We encourage New York City to welcome these emerging technologies and provide opportunities for the city to learn from innovative companies in these fields. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Cleve?
Cleve.
Cleve, I'm so sorry. I too am from Queens and I too went to SUNY Albany. I know you put that in there for a reason. My question is, because I, and I do appreciate your testimony, really focusing on our communities, on Black and Latino communities, and really not just how we are empowering ourselves with crypto, but really like the narrative. So I'm curious, what is your response? Like, you know, you have, you know this better than I do, but what is your response to the criticism that this technology, you know, has resulted in big losses for our communities? What is your response to that?
My response is there's no data that shows that it was black and Latino communities that actually suffered the greatest losses. Actually, when you look at Terra Luna and Celsius and even FTX, the greatest were likely white retail investors. Where we see black and Latino communities over index are in Bitcoin or Ethereum or within NFTs, where you actually are those areas that will recover. So, as I said in my testimony, there are a lot of assumptions being made simply because we are black and brown. Because there's an assumption that we are not thriving in this space. The space has its challenges, absolutely. We have bad actors, but we need more data before we throw out assumptions. And no, absolutely no. We have data that shows that black and Latino communities lead national adoption of cryptocurrency, but there is no data that we have disproportionately been disaffected by the downturn in the markets.
And I just want to ask your opinion. The previous panelist, Albert, was, I think, speaking very frankly about blockchain specifically. So this question is for both of you. And how the administration's testimony today cannot really point to direct services utilizing blockchain that would benefit New Yorkers, that would differentiate the way that they are receiving services now versus on the blockchain? I'm curious from both of your perspectives, is that true? How do you feel that the conversation around blockchain or potentially crypto could benefit, could improve the way that black and brown primarily New Yorkers receive benefits or interact with city government? What are some, what are some instances or cities that that's worked in?
You want to go first? Well, I do want to credit the work that Tech NYC is doing in terms of fueling the entrepreneurship ecosystem. Because the last I checked, all economies are built on entrepreneurship and small business, right? So I do think that there's a lot of opportunities for the city, the state, to actually leverage technology, not just to, for efficiencies and optimization within the government, but also to foster growth and economic growth. I will say that, you know, the first panel, right now, we absolutely should be looking at testing some of these options, right? Integrating somewhere where these areas make sense. I think it's absolutely true. There are some areas where we don't need to use blockchain. We have a whole slew of emerging technologies, AI, VR, AR. And it is when we actually fuse them that we're most effective. You know, I think at the heart of the question is this space is barely a decade old, right? We are at the starting line of a new industry and it's going to take time for this space to mature. But it is disconcerting that the financial capital of the world, with Wall Street in its backyard, is very resistant to not just looking at the technology for government efficiency, but also to fuel entrepreneurship and to optimize how we do business in New York City. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I do think for the opportunity to grow, we have to be open.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would add that blockchain and cryptocurrency technology really has made a huge difference in terms of transaction timing, right? And in terms of if someone was to transfer funds from bank accounts, it could sometimes take days to clear, whereas this creates solutions that really make efficiencies in a lot of headway in terms of the times of currency transactions. So that could be something that could easily, in the future, benefit government services, especially people who, you know, you could be paying, you know, for applications or any sort of, you know, government services or processes. And I think in addition to that, we are seeing some uses for this technology to help back the logging and applications for IDs, right? And as this is something that New York City has made, you know, a huge amount of progress and is one of the leading cities in terms of ID accessibility for all types of New Yorkers. And so that is something, whereas New York and other states and cities continue to develop ID and driver's licenses to be more, more digital and virtual, this could help make a big difference.
Thank you.
If I can add, and especially to piggyback off of that, digital cash infrastructure is the important piece right now. When you look at making payments cheaper and faster, or my family is Haitian-American, we send money back home. And right now, you know, Western Union can take up to 30%. These transactions have been shown that to be cheaper and faster leveraging cryptocurrency. The cost of doing business for entrepreneurs, e-commerce businesses is high. You know, they charge a lot for you to accept credit cards. So digital cash infrastructure built on stable coins can actually help alleviate that. And then also, when you look at, you know, identity, as you mentioned, right now, federal mandate of know your customer and AML and KYC, those requirements keep people who have been locked out further out because of the identity, you know, requirements that we have. Let's be honest, most people do not have a driver's license or a credit card. And most people cannot access basic services because they don't have that plus a utility bill. It's decentralized identity, you know, verifying, using those alternative verifiers can give people more access, not just to the traditional financial system, but to basic services as well.
Is there, isn't there a level of identity verification for someone looking to complete a transaction, for example? So my understanding is like they do need to prove, have proof of residency, like a utility bill. So I am also trying to understand what the requirements are for someone looking to send money at like a Western Union versus like potentially using blockchain. It feels like, I guess I just don't understand what the difference is because it feels like they are still very much required to provide proof of verification. And it's, there's still an element of like, you got to look for your documents. You got to provide that. So where is the distinction and how can you support that argument?
That's an excellent question. The distinction is which ID do you need to provide? We know so many people own property but have no proof that they actually own that property. And the requirements that any government requires now, most people who have been locked out of any society cannot provide them. So it's more about how do we actually collect that data? And also, what are we collecting? And I think to the council member's point, privacy is something that is paramount of in crypto. So let me give you an example for that, right? What if we say for communities that may have problems with those traditional identifiers, which are driver's license and the utility bill, that we use something else, right? And then the value of blockchain is we verify that identity, whatever that identifier is, and that is, that is part of their wallet, right? That we identify it twice. And now they can use that wallet to share information appropriately. So they don't have to give the driver, the gas station guy their driver's license to know how much they weigh and how, if they're a donor and that, when the person only needs to verify that they can buy a credit card. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it is really, it's the types of identifiers we've been requesting that are exclusionary, right? It's looking at different types that people have, quite frankly, especially in communities of color, and then verifying them once, right? Or when it's appropriate, how many times they go to one city agency, they have to provide this data, but this agency requires something totally different. And what if the city can actually verify that their identity on blockchain that one time? And now they give data as necessary? Just so you know, on the private blockchain side, medical companies- Just so you know, on the private blockchain side, medical companies that are required to comply with HIPAA by securing patient data on, you know, securely storing patient data or leveraging blockchain for that, and that actually complies with HIPAA. Companies like Merck are securing patient data on blockchain. And that is, if that can't comply for the Department of Health, we can look at alternatives that can actually make it easier for people.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both so much. I appreciate your testimonies today. You are.
Thank you again for your testimony. Now we move to here from witnesses joining us via Zoom. And our first panelists are Professor Roedes, followed by Noel Haldago, and followed by, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Theo Chino.
Your time will begin.
Thank you to the committee and to Chairwoman Gutierrez for hearing us today. I'm here in my capacity as a longtime New York City resident. I was educated at New York University in the early 80s, and I currently teach as an adjunct professor in the master's degree program, teaching e-commerce in a digital concentration in the School of Professional Studies. I have had the pleasure to thrive in my work in technology while remaining in New York City. In my day job, I currently work for Microsoft, a journey I started in late 2014 to learn about cloud. In 2015, I fell down the blockchain rabbit hole on my latest innovation wave journey, and I co-founded our blockchain work at Microsoft. Three jobs later at Microsoft, I'm now a Director of Strategy and Transformation, leading our blockchain work in our cloud hardware supply chain. This is award-winning work garnering the top Gartner Power of the Prohibition Award in the supply chain area. We were also recently nominated as a finalist in the Treasury Risk category for risk management. This work is highlighted in a couple of public-facing blogs, which you can find, both on my LinkedIn as well as in my Microsoft blog, and I will include those in the testimony. And notably, this is an area of technology that blockchain is being utilized in the context of a multi-company procedure today, where we actually do use a private blockchain implementation to achieve very significant benefits, both in risk management as well as cost recovery. It is not a public blockchain today, but it actually could ride in a public blockchain infrastructure in the future. And we're actually working on some proof of concepts to validate that the requirements that we currently have in place around privacy among proprietary data across the participants in this private blockchain can be maintained in the category of an implementation, for example, on a Layer 2 technology with zero knowledge proofs, not to get too technical. I want to speak a moment about the regulatory landscape and how technology companies think about this and as it relates to different innovation waves that we've lived through, and I've been through many since the 80s. Microsoft and other technology companies often make a distinction when talking about how to govern or regulate technology. In particular, we like to talk a bit about regulation of actors and use cases versus regulation of the technology itself. This debate plays out time and time again. It's played out in the AI space. It has played out in privacy-enabling cryptography and in the digital divide that separates the Internet haves from the have-nots. It even delves into code as free speech. I'm not going to go there today. The reason for this distinction is that it's a very slippery slope once you cross this chasm and seek to start to regulate written code. Let's take, for example, what might have occurred in the tech industry if we had looked to every innovation, you know, across my journey in the technology space, and what might have happened if we regulated these new inventions before they were allowed to flourish? So I started in technology as a computer science student at New York University in the early 80s. I've seen the journey of tech booms and busts, and innovation waves from PCs to networking, to peer-to-peer networking, databases, client-server databases, and client-server email systems, and the evolution of the web from a command-line interface to the scaled-up e-commerce and transactional system that it is today. Imagine if we tried to regulate all the code that was being written by IBM, Microsoft, Oracle, Borland, Sybase, and many other companies. Today, the United States would not be the vibrant tech industry community that it is. This innovation would not exist here today. The communities that have flourished around the tech industry wouldn't exist. They would have been regulated into oblivion. Today, New York City is a very significant beneficiary of the tech community, something that in the early 80s was actually not predestined. With the advent of the cloud boom, it became possible for tech startups to work from offices in New York City versus campuses in Silicon Valley. This tech industry brings with it a vibrant, young, and innovative, and intellectually curious community to every neighborhood of the five boroughs of New York City. Witness the recent rental booms in the Financial District, Hell's Kitchen, and Hudson Yards, East Williamsburg, Bushwick, Greenpoint, and beyond. While commercial buildings suffer from a reduction of permanent office workers, young community and socially-driven people are moving into cities to work and live where they want in the proximity of their peers. So let me say this again, curious, young, educated, well-paid people in the tech industry are moving into New York to be with their peer groups. This is a very good thing. And the blockchain and cryptocurrency community in particular is flourishing here as well. So we want to think about this cohort that comes with the technology innovation as the same way that we think about the cohorts that attend universities and colleges that are all throughout New York City. A large number of people have their first experience in New York City because of this draw, the opportunity to work and live in a vibrant city among their peers. I want to share a couple of things on the technology side. Was that a warning on time?
Yeah, you have time, but just be respectful to other panelists.
Yes, okay. In particular, in the blockchain and crypto startup ecosystem, it dominates the fintech landscape about 50%, according to CB Insights, are actually crypto and blockchain startups within the, you know, the surveys that they do. So it's a very large part of what's going on, and obviously, New York City is a great place for fintech. The commissioner who spoke earlier had some very good distinctions between blockchain technology and cryptocurrency. Obviously, these are important to consider. This is a vast technical landscape. One of the things we want to think about is that cryptocurrency is a use case of blockchain technology that has been acknowledged by other panelists as well. I also want to point out, because I know in New York State, there are specific regulations against a specific type of mining activities. About 98% of the cryptocurrency and blockchain communities actually don't use those type of mining algorithms. So while it's unfortunate that one of the largest does, a lot of the tech innovation is going on outside of that particular community in the area of proof of state. And so it's important distinction when we talk about this, that we don't throw out the baby with the bathwater, so to speak. Similarly, when we talk about the fraud that's going on in the cryptocurrency space and the examples that were referenced earlier, including Terra Luna, FTX, and others, those are examples of bad actors who are leveraging an industry to actually achieve their fraud. They are not examples of fundamental flaws in the technology. And it's a very important distinction, because we can see those bad actors in regulated communities as well, and we don't throw out the financial system. So a couple of areas that I want to highlight, and I'll pass it over back to the committee. There was a point made earlier comparing blockchain to a database. Blockchain is not a database, it's a transactional ledger and has very specific properties associated with that that are designed for a specific purpose. And there's a huge benefit to the qualities of a sealed-in-time, transactable, attestable, immutable technology called blockchain that is absolutely very different than a database and has different use cases. No one would seek to build a high-scale transactional database on top of blockchain technology. However, blockchain technology could provide valuable use cases around a testable data, a testable signatures, things like the examples that the commissioner used earlier around deeds and titles and things like that. I would go so far as to say, transitioning from physical notary capability into digitally attestable signatures would be a wonderful step from a regulatory perspective to actually advance the entire world around things that are digital. There's a whole landscape of other really interesting things going on. Someone mentioned the example of the license use case earlier. That's a use case in both zero knowledge proofs, which is an interesting technology, as well as decentralized identities or self-owned identities, which are also very powerful constructs of this technology sphere. Lastly, the technology space is really pushing forward many areas of technology that have been very niche in the past, and zero knowledge proofs is a great example of that. There's been research in zero knowledge proofs, both in the industry and at Microsoft and academia, for many, many years, but there's never been an application that's allowed this technology to be scaled up and tested in the wild on the internet the way blockchain technology and cryptocurrencies have. So with that, I will pass it over back to the committee.
Thank you so much, Professor Roedes. We would appreciate if you sent your testimony in writing. And our next panelist is representative from Beta NYC.
Your time will begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez and committee members. First off, thank you for creating an option for us to participate remotely. We believe that remote communication tools are fundamentals for the government in the digital age. I am not Noel, I am Jazzy Smith. I use she/her pronouns, standing in for Noel today, and I am the Fellowship Manager at Beta NYC. A little bit of background, Beta NYC is a civic tech organization dedicated to improving lives of all New Yorkers through civic design, technology, and data. We envision an informed and empowered public that can leverage civic design, technology, and data to hold government accountable and approve improved economic opportunity. Beta NYC demystifies design, technology, and data to the point where anyone can use it, create it, and participate it in the decision-making process. We host a number of online platforms that provide the general public a mechanism to share ideas and data. For the last 10 years, we've helped New York City government agencies explore and adapt to new technologies. For the last seven, we have dedicated our efforts to modernize community boards. We have researched their needs and documented technology and data literacy gaps across all five boroughs. We bridge these gaps via a service we call Research and Data Assistant Requests, RADAR for short. Radars help provide in-depth technology and analytical services to borough presidents, council members, community boards, and community-based organizations. Through our research, we haven't seen cryptocurrencies, i.e. city coin, nor blockchain technologies, provide any real solutions for New Yorkers who need government services through technology. Right now, blockchain technology is not a piece of technology that's mature enough for government services. Currently, blockchain and cryptocurrencies are solutions looking for a problem. Why should we adopt experimental technology when we can barely keep our current services modern? We spent a decade being sold on smart city technology, only to see government practices not keep up with the marketing hype. From gunshot detection to facial recognition, we consistently see groundbreaking technologies fail to meet their marketing. Chris Wong, an NYC urban technologist, so aptly said, "Every government agency everywhere is working on a new system. It will solve all of their data problems, and it will be ready to use in 18 to 24 months." End quote. We don't want to be fleeced again. We recommend keeping an eye on blockchain and cryptocurrency development, but let us make sure that we fix current issues with government services. Let's make sure that we're developing services for all New Yorkers first. Moving forward, we want New York City agencies to ask themselves three questions before adopting any blockchain or cryptocurrency technology. One, how does blockchain or cryptocurrency tools uniquely address this need? Two, how are blockchain or cryptocurrency tools better than the currently vetted open-or-close source tools? And three, what are the unique issues that these tools will solve that won't require perpetual service contracts with external service providers? I would defer to my team for any follow-up questions. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your time and attention.
Thank you both. Thank you, Jazzy. Thank you for sticking around to testify. I don't have any questions. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And our final panelist is Theo Chino.
Your time will begin.
Buenos dias, buenas tardes, Consejo Gutierrez. My name is Theo Chino. I used to be a Bitcoin entrepreneur. I am a Latino. I am a victim of housing. And basically, everybody talks about the Latino, the poor, and the access to the technology. Basically, I'm the embodiment of how the lawmakers, the technologies, the politicians, and every stakeholder is talking on my behalf, but have made sure that we, the poor, uneducated, Black and Brown Latinos of New York City, cannot participate in the technology. Let me explain how this happened, or how it goes about. Today, the definition that I share about blockchain technology and Bitcoin are basically based on the illiterate definition created by clueless high school student back in 2009 on how to explain what the technology was to clueless parents. That is the definition that the FBI, that the Attorney Generals back in 2009 used to define blockchain. Basically, after that, that is, those definitions were used by Senator Schumer to create a fear around the industry that was also used by the MasterCard, the MasterCards and the Visa of the world, because suddenly they were fearing some competition. In 2004, at the NYDFS hearing, suddenly you had this huge industry leader, such as the Winklevoss brother, such as other people who came and said, "We need to regulate," because there were some bad actor, and we couldn't let the uneducated people have that technology. So they came up with the NYDFS Bit License, which you heard our CTO talk about. At that moment, basically, I had 150 bodega throughout the Bronx and northern Harlem and northern Manhattan, who were, we were subjected to the Bit License. Suddenly, I had to close my business, and all the investment I put forward got lost. So basically, this is, the Bit License is the biggest hinder of the technology in the state of New York. So one thing the city council could do is actually put a resolution forward and say, "We would like the Bit License to be abolished." So let me tell you about, a little bit about myself. What is the Bitcoin, first of all, or the token? First of all, it is the first intangible commodity ever created. And if you read Karl Marx, Chapter 1 on Community, Karl Marx talks about the relative form of value, and that's what Bitcoin is. It is a commodity, and that's it. Let's not wrap our world around blockchain, the this and that. All it is is a virtual, it's the first intangible commodity ever created on the internet. So why do I bring that up? Because if you think of Bitcoin and everything that comes out of the blockchain, every product that comes out of the blockchain as an intangible commodity, then you can wrap your head around legislating the product that comes out of that technology. But right now, we're not doing that. The Bit License is, it was a big problem. So in terms of why Latinos... So in terms of why Latinos are afraid, or poor people are afraid to jump into that space, well, you have to look at what are the consequences of jumping into space? Look at Ross Ulrich, he's serving a life sentence for having created the marketplace around Silk Road. Is that sentence fair? Is that sentence the right sentence? One can ask this question, but it happened in New York, and all New Yorkers are afraid to jump into the space without knowing what's going to happen to them. And then we can talk about a Bitcoiner in Arizona, Thomas Costanzo, who spent five years in jail because the FBI wanted to know how many Bitcoin he had, and they kept asking, they kept buying Bitcoin from him until he did a transaction worth $100,000 worth in cash in a McDonald's. These are the consequences for poor and Latino and brown and black people when dealing with Bitcoin. So we don't want to be part of that technology sphere. So we have to go out.
Your time has expired.
So I have, if you have any question, I'm available. If you want to talk about my background, which is based, I started as a computer kid in the 80s, I worked in the Silicon Valley, I started Book.org in the 90s, I couldn't get a credit card machine because of the skin of my collar, so basically, Book.org disappeared. I worked for CyberSource, which is a credit card fraud company in the Silicon Valley, worked for Time Warner. I am a member of the Socialist Party, I am the leader of the Social Democrat of America, a socialist faction inside the Democratic Party, and I deal with a lot of technology, such as Red My Blog, Show the Book, La Shit List, New York, Restore the Force, and the New York City Privacy Board Advocate. And I used to be a candidate for Public Advocate of New York City, because the Public Advocate is the leader of the COPIC. COPIC is the body that is supposed to answer all those questions about privacy, technology, and governmental information. And we haven't heard anything from Public Advocate Williams about all this topic, and that's what I ran in 2017 and in 2019. That's who I am. Thank you for your time, Concejal Gutierrez. And if you want to know why the Latino are not part of the space, just contact me, you know where to find me.
Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. It was our final witness. And if we have missed anyone who has registered to testify today and has yet been called, please use the Zoom hand function. And let me just check, anyone? No, I was just told there is no one on Zoom, so I'm going to turn it to Chair Gutierrez to adjourn the hearing.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.